It is five o'clock on Monday, May 22, 2023, and I'm calling to order Education Operations Committee meeting for the Wausau School District Board of Education. I'm seeking a motion to approve the minutes of the March 27, 2023, excuse me, the May, April, April 24 minutes. Seeking a motion?
So.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. At this point in time, I would like to recognize speakers and students who wish to make a public comment, but before we do, I'd like to make a couple of reminders, and I believe we do have some speakers. Thank you very much. The Board recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on district matters. Please identify yourself by name and state your address. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to three minutes. The timing system will be in front of you. Speakers shall direct all comments to the Board and not to the staff or other participants. Public comments may not identify specific personnel or students by name or through the use of sufficiently detailed description so as to identify. With that, I'll just move on. Our first speaker is Bethany Stuckey.
My name is Bethany Stuckey. My address is 1614 Emerson Street, Wausau, 54403. Good evening. I am a member of the Governance Council of the Wausau Area Montessori Charter School, which has been sharing space with the Horace Mann Middle School for the past 17 years. I am a parent of a first and second grader who have both received a Montessori education since they were in 4K. For those of you who may not be familiar with Montessori philosophy, it is a paradigm that values independence, self-reliance, hands-on learning, and developing real-world skills. Children are encouraged to learn by engaging in topics that interest them and are given the ability to choose what areas of learning to work on throughout the day to meet their academic goals with the help of their classroom guides. Montessori philosophy also places value in virtues such as respect, generosity, kindness, gratitude, and compassion, and those virtues are practiced within the classroom as well as implemented out of the classroom through community outreach projects. Classrooms are typically comprised of a range of three age groups or grades, which allow older children to act as role models for younger children and for children to learn from their, for younger children to learn from their older peers and to ask for their help with tasks as needed. Montessori kids take a lot of pride in being the older kids in a classroom and being able to set a good example. Learning in a Montessori classroom does not always look the same as a traditional classroom. Whereas in most schools, children sit at desks or tables to receive instruction and do their classwork, due to the wide range of projects and tasks that may be going on at a given time, Montessori students are encouraged to find a location that works best for the tasks they are working on. So while you may find children working at tables or desks, you are also likely to find many of them on the floor with their work spread out around them. Imagine if you will, 27 to 30 kids all building elaborate Aztec temples out of cardboard and hot glue. This isn't just art, this is history, geography, culture, and science, all rolled into one, and they're all spread across the floor, creating their temples and writing compositions for their tri-fold project boards. This is just one example of how a Montessori classroom is utilized. Access to free public education of this nature is a huge asset to our community and deserving of every chance possible to reach its full potential. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. I think that was well under three minutes, so we're okay. Next speaker, Don Deitchi.
Good evening, Dr. Hiltz and the Wausau School Board members. I am a proud mom of three children in the district. For the past 10 years, our family has been involved in Montessori education, nine of those years at Wausau Area Montessori Charter School. My husband Chris and I are very active at Montessori. He is Vice President of the Governance Council, and I serve as Treasurer of Parent Connect, our school PTO. Not only are we invested in their education, but in their schooling experience as a whole. Montessori charter opened 17 years ago in September of 2005, occupying unused space within Horace Mann. The district superintendent at the time indicated that our presence there was going to be temporary. Fast forward to now, nearly 18 years later, and we are still in the same situation. I speak for myself and many other Montessori parents when I say that we are grateful for the proposed additions to our school, and we appreciate how well Horace Mann staff and Dr. Phelps have worked with us over the years. However, even with the upcoming additions, being housed within Horace Mann is not giving our children the optimal environment needed for the best Montessori education. If given our own building, having a dedicated location within the district would allow us to be more accessible to families, it would allow for more growth. Currently, our capacity within Horace Mann is 126 students, and we are at 75% capacity right now. If we moved to the current Lincoln Elementary Building, for example, we would be able to expand that to 234 students, which is about an 85% increase. We could choose drop-off and dismissal times that work best for our students, staff, and families. We could schedule encore and core classroom instruction and work, as well as lunch and recess at times that are most optimal and aligned with Montessori philosophy. Currently, we have to take middle school occupation of classrooms and facilities into Earlier this year, my six-year-old, Ellie, came to me concerned about the profanities she was hearing from the middle school kids on the bus. This problem has been mostly solved as she not only rides the bus with other Montessori kids, mostly just her older brother, but I have concerns about her being in a school building with middle schoolers. The current situation is not ideal. Moving forward with plans to expand a not-ideal situation is not only unwise but unhelpful to our students, who deserve a much better learning environment. Our school and our kids are long overdue for a place of our own to call home. Thank you all for the time that you have taken to listen to our concerns, and we truly appreciate your hard work, and we are grateful for your dedication to our students. Thanks.
Thank you, Donna. Next speaker, Taylor Brier.
My name is Taylor Brier. My address is 223727 Orchid Lane in Wausau, Wisconsin. So as I said, my name is Taylor. I'm a substitute teacher within the district and a parent of a second grader at the Wausau Montessori Area Montessori Charter School. I also have a son who is going to be in kindergarten next year and is truly excited. He wants to skip kindergarten, or skip summer break and go straight to kindergarten. It is my sincere belief that Montessori would be an excellent steward of their own dedicated school building within the district. While Montessori has given me many reasons to hold this belief over the years, tonight I just want to emphasize an aspect that may not be immediately apparent but has profound benefits for the entire school district: a passion for learning. Recently, the Montessori school organized a tour for families who will be joining the school next year. It was a chance for families to see the classroom, ask questions, and gain insights directly from our students about their experience in class. During the feedback session, several parents expressed their excitement and admiration for the student's genuine passion of learning. This enthusiasm stems from the Montessori approach, which encourages students to explore our state standards through hands-on, student-led projects that ignite their curiosity and nurture their interests. For instance, one of our A2 students recently built an impressive boat as part of their learning journey that floats and works, full-size. This is just one example of the need for a conductive, open learning concept environment that can accommodate such endeavors. A building such as Lincoln, or any building, would allow students the opportunity to interact with and learn from one another as they undergo these ambitious projects. They often require ample space. This contagious effects of this passion for learning are remarkable amongst more than just their students and their peers. Those parents who were recently visiting the Montessori classrooms were deeply moved by the student's evident enthusiasm, and this sentiment will undoubtedly radiate throughout our community and beyond. As the sole dedicated Montessori school within a 90-mile radius, we have the potential to attract families from neighboring districts. I currently unhappily commute 20 minutes one way to drop my child off, my children soon off, and I know families who travel much farther just to come to our school. By continuing to invest in Montessori and providing the necessary infrastructure and resources, we can create an environment where our students' passion for learning thrives and spreads. It's worth noting that my own discovery of the Montessori school was through word-of-mouth by passionate parents, a testament to its untapped potential that goes beyond the limitations of its current accommodations. I urge the Wausau School Board to carefully consider the tremendous impact that a dedicated building for the Wausau Area Montessori Charter School would have, not only on our students and our teachers and the district, but on the broader community. Thank you.
Next speaker, Larry Stuckey.
Members of the Board, Dr. Hiltz, my name is Larry Stuckey. I live at 616 Eau Claire Boulevard, which is within the Wausau district. I spent the last 16 years of my career as a high school science teacher. I'm happy to be here tonight to talk about the Wausau Area Montessori Charter School. We have two grandchildren in this school who are both excelling because of what Montessori is and how it operates. The other day, I picked up our grandkids after school, as usual. Also, as usual, they proceeded to relate what they had done that day, along with some special things that had happened during the day. My grandkids told me that Bruno, the children's house classroom pet, had died at the age of six years. They went on spontaneously to tell me, quote, "Bruno lived a good, long life for a guinea pig," unquote. They told me that people were sad that Bruno had died, but the students had written condolence cards to staff and faculty. This situation brought forth several reasons why we like Montessori. The Montessori program supported our grandkids through what might have been a traumatic event for young children under different circumstances. The fact that Bruno lived in the children's house taught the children practical skills such as feeding and watering animals on a regular basis and gave them a better understanding of their role in the natural world and respect for life. The fact that the children wrote condolence cards was a development in their social skills of kindness and empathy during this sensitive period. The prepared environment provided by Montessori enhances the learning opportunities for our grandchildren. The guides respect the children's absorbent minds during their respective sensitive periods for learning reading, writing, and arithmetic. We appreciate and support the Wausau Area Montessori Charter School. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Dana Moore.
My name is Dana Moore, and I live at 3415 Wildwood Lane in Wausau. I am a parent in the district of two Montessori students, one kindergartner and one third grader, and another that will join in a year. My husband and I grew up in the area, but we lived our first decade of marriage in Los Angeles and Chicago. During that time, I homeschooled my children, and then we moved to Wausau in late 2020, and I continued to homeschool. When our life circumstances changed a bit, we started to look for a public school that would fit within our family values and needs, and I was really delighted to find not only an outdoor school for the younger kids at Monk Botanical Gardens, but then a public Montessori school. I can't tell you how much this is coveted if you're coming from a big city like where I lived. A free Montessori school for our eldest. One of the number-one benefits for us in this school setting was that hands-on learning experience that everyone is talking about, working with materials, almost no iPad use outside of testing and occasional research. So I was really excited to find this option in Wausau. I want to say I have noticed while we've been in Wausau, education's a massive undertaking, and I think Wausau is trying to look at providing a wide array of educational opportunities from young to your high schoolers, and I think that's amazing. I particularly see it in the high schoolers, and I think it needs to be really emphasized for our younger learners as well. Coming from a homeschool background, homeschoolers choose that for a variety of different reasons, and then they may choose something else down the road, and so having this variety of options is, I think, important to the district. And when we're talking about that open enrollment and access, our space over on the east side isn't always accessible to people, so being more centrally located, I think, is an important way to provide this opportunity to more students in our district. We do have, I'm going to look at the number, 48 from the west side this year, and I think 38 from the, or 48 from the east side and 38 from the west side. Just within this year, we had five previous homeschooled students and eight open-enrolled students. That's just this year. So I think it's something to keep in mind in providing lots of educational opportunity to everyone in the district. And lastly, I think you're noticing we're kind of all here saying the school's been waiting for 17 years to have the right space to practice that educational philosophy for our students. We're really grateful for what we have, and we see that there could be more. So we thank you for your support and your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Dana. Next speaker, Tiffany Rodriguez.
Hi, I think I meant for Montessori, by the way. My name is Tiffany Rodriguez Lee. I live at 937 Jefferson Street here in Wausau. Good evening. Again, my name is Tiffany, Wausau resident for the past decade, parent to three children, one DC Everest Junior High student, and two Wausau Montessori students ages seven and almost nine, currently serving as the Montessori Council Governance Council President. You know, and whether we can all agree that we got to this point for the right reasons or not, we are here, and I'm here to recap some of the points made by my Montessori community members and urge you to consider our requests, not just for our own good, but for the betterment of the Wausau community as a whole and especially the school district as a whole. I have family from all over the country, concentrated in New York, Puerto Rico, the greater Seattle/Washington area, and before we bought our house last summer downtown, relocating closer to family was really on the top of our mind, so we rented for a while to make that decision. For many reasons, we decided to make Wausau a home, but two of the most important were one, cost of living, and two, the ability to send our kids to a Montessori school that was part of a public district. As you've heard before, that is pretty rare. We are the, where I think the closest one is, I don't know, Fox Valley, 90-mile radius. It's not common for these to be part of a public school district and tuition-free. Really a gem. I'm glad we stayed, and I'm thankful for this alternative education method that the school provides my children, but it's imperative that we make this opportunity more accessible. Our current situation and the proposed referendum upgrade, while we're thankful for, was never our original intent. For over a decade, we've requested our own space so that we can truly flourish and grow into an incredible asset for the Wausau community. Placing us at a school like Lincoln is a huge step in increasing accessibility to our school. As a school, we've continued to make sacrifices, as has Horace Mann, and we're really grateful for our partnership with them, but we know we can't operate this way forever. The proposed central location would allow us to welcome Lincoln area families with open arms should they feel this is a good fit for them. It would take our students out of a middle school, which can be daunting, a daunting environment for the parent of a five-year-old to consider, and increase our enrollment, bring students back to the district that we've lost, and make room for new families to come to the area. We are a public, not voucher, charter school with a proven track record of success, and we believe that the Wausau School District now has a pivotal opportunity to provide equal access for all students and be a model for the entire state in how to provide tuition-free Montessori education. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Tiffany. Next speaker, Danica Zekares. I hope I was at least close.
Hi, I'm Danica Zekares. I live at 218923 Timber River Trail in Wausau, 54401. I am actually a 4K teacher in the district, and I submitted some concerns in writing to Dr. Hiltz over the weekend just in relation to the restructuring plan and doing that staggered implementation. So just a couple of things that I want to put out to you just to consider before you make that decision. Doing a staggered move between Riverview and Hewitt, Texas, is going to directly impact us at Riverview 4K team especially because we will have to relocate over to Hawthorne. And currently, my team and I are very close. We collaborate daily, and my concern is where our classrooms would be going into Hawthorne because we wouldn't be moving into designated 4K spaces. We would be moving into spaces that are available for us to move into. So having that closeness to each other is a concern that I have for not only the 4K staff, but the students as well. We do Wacky Wednesday every week, and our students get to know each other and get to know the teachers very quickly. Another concern I have would be the effect on programming. I currently have the deaf and hard-of-hearing population, and I have students who attend in the morning, and then in the afternoon, they go with the deaf and hard-of-hearing teacher. So I'm just curious about how that would look between her and I, sharing those students. And something that I was thinking about for Riverview, when Hewitt, Texas moves into Riverview, having additional sections in the building, how will that affect our encore classes? Space is a premium, as you know, in the district. So just a couple of things that I wanted to point out before you go ahead and make that decision. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Danica. Thank you to all of you who have given comments today. Greatly appreciate that. Moving on to Agenda Item 4, Red Granite Charter School Contract Approval. Representatives from the Red Granite Charter School will present the Board with a charter contract for Board approval.
Good evening. Give me one second to get things opened up, and I have...
Do you want me to start?
Yeah, you can go ahead.
Great, will do. Yeah, good evening. So we realized that you just got a copy of that contract today. Actually, everybody did. But just to kind of let you know that Dr. Caldwell and I, and Dr. Simpkins, and Chamomile, we've been working closely together over the last number of months, and one thing I want the Board to know is it's been a very collaborative effort. I've been very impressed with their organization, their vision, the creation of this. They drafted the original contract, and so we've stayed in touch throughout this process. The contract that you received today was reviewed by an attorney, Tess O'Brien, who actually created the template for the state, so she's very knowledgeable about this. And so we, like I said, we've met previously. We, Dr. Simpkins and Chamomile and I, and Dr. Caldwell have not met since we received this red-line version of the contract, so we'll need to do that. You'll see a lot of redlining in there. Much of it is technical, much of it is restructuring. There are some substantive things that we need to work out as well. So why don't I pause there, and did you have something to share?
Well, do you want me to just, sorry, so I have Chamomile, who is on Zoom because she... person. We, in terms of the contract for us, most of, the most important points are that we're looking to open in the fall of 2024. That for us is critically important. We've discussed this with Dr. Hiltz as well in terms of what that would look like and the options we have, given the overarching restructuring that's going on. I don't, I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth, or, so we've talked about going to Hewitt, Texas in the fall of 2024 as part of a kind of partial move-in. We've talked about having mobile classrooms at Hewitt, Texas, and then we've talked about opening in a temporary location. But it is, it is important to us that we open in the fall of 2024, which was, of course, what the initial authorization agreement was based on. And at that time, we weren't, the restructuring hadn't really taken place. Otherwise, the contract itself is largely modeled off of existing contracts. It's already been sent to DPI, which is, and gotten approval there in terms of meeting their metrics and their standards. Chamomile can speak more fluently about that. And from our standpoint, as Dr. Hiltz said, we're very much wanting this to be collaborative and to come up with something that kind of feels appropriate and comfortable to everybody involved. And we don't, you know, like we said, we met, was it just last week or two weeks ago, to kind of go over it, go over some of the initial questions that Dr. Hiltz had, and at that time, the attorneys that now have sent this back had not gotten it back to us, so I just received this today as well in terms of the edits. And I agree with Dr. Hiltz, a lot of them is, a lot of it's just kind of like spacing and paragraphs and things like that. Not all of it is necessarily formative in terms of the feedback.
If I could add, just in terms of the fit for Red Granite, so as you know, we just heard several people talk about the value of the variety of our programming. So we obviously have all of our traditional educational opportunities, which are strong. We have a Montessori option, which is strong. We have a virtual option, which is strong. We have EEA. We've got a number of varieties. This would fill, and to this point, unfilled niche with the outdoor and the Waldorf-inspired concept, so it would be a healthy addition to, for the opportunities for our kids. So we're excited about the, about the possibilities.
Dr. Simpkins, would you mind closing your computer? Because we have Chamomile on WebEx, so with you on Zoom with her, it's giving us feedback.
Gotcha.
Sorry. I was trying to look at notes from the meeting that we had.
Am I able to speak, or just let me know when? I can't see everybody, so I don't know when it's my turn.
You can go ahead, Chamomile.
Okay, great. Thank you so much, and thank you both for speaking so eloquently. I really appreciate everybody's time today. Yeah, and just bringing it back around from our initial meetings, we, our hope is to apply for federal charter school grant funds, which would give us an implementation as well as a planning year. So this next year, the 23-24 school year, would be our planning year with an opening date of 2024, and so that's reflected in this charter contract. To be able to apply for those grant funds, we do need a signed charter contract with our authorizer, and so that is part of the timing of bringing this to you today. Same as everybody else, this is my first time seeing it with the red lines. I've been lucky enough to be involved in authoring multiple charter contracts and working with Wisconsin Resource Center for Charter Schools, who support schools in authoring charter contracts. We are, I'm not legally, you know, bound to this, but it has been reviewed by lawyers. And as Megan said, we also had an opportunity to send it to DPI. They have a list of benchmarks. One of their biggest things in looking at charter school contracts today that may be differed from five to 10 years ago is really making sure that there is afforded the autonomy to the charter school, especially in the realm of determining the pedagogical programming implemented, as well as the hiring procedures and processes for the charter school. They want to make sure that the charter schools are able to have the folks in place that really have the deep understanding of the pedagogical elements that are trying to be implemented. And so, you know, we're here to collaboratively work on, you know, looking at all the redlines that are in the charter contract. Some of them that immediately jump out to me are areas that do give our school some autonomy, so I think there's going to be some potential for negotiations back and forth. But I do hope that we're able to come to an agreement on this charter contract by July, which is kind of like the latest that we can get it signed to still be able to get our grant application in, which is July when that goes in, and then we would find out and start receiving those funds in October. So if you have the charter contract in front of you, the section that I'm looking at, which is kind of where it really lays out some of those autonomies for the school, is Section I see you scrolling through there. Yep, so now you're to it. And so that's a list of areas where the Governance Board would have some autonomies and authority over decision-making, and I think that... And I think that maybe some of this is semantics of why it was redlined. So I hope that we can come to some language that's agreeable for everybody. But this really gives the school autonomy over vision, mission, goals, marketing, charter school operations and procedures, and developing job descriptions, and then being on the committee that hires that staff. All of these things, I believe, are truly important to the functioning of an autonomous charter school. You know, the, the goal of charter schools in the state of Wisconsin is that they are living laboratories, that they're doing something new and creative. And for that to take place, that governance board really needs to oversee that, that pedagogy side of the school. And so I look forward to collaboratively working to find some language that we can agree on. And I know that this, you know, there's, this whole extensive list doesn't need to be there, but there's some autonomies that are really required by the state of Wisconsin to be afforded. And as I mentioned before, that, that hiring committee and being on that committee, ultimately knowing that the WSA school board is the employer of those employees and would ultimately have the yay or nay say of if that person was hired, but to decide, you know, who's going to go to you for that, that we are involved in that hiring process and developing those job descriptions. So just wanted to put that plug in, that that is a, that is a place that's pretty important. I think those are most of the things that I wanted to touch on again. I haven't had an opportunity to go through the entire contract yet, but this is kind of that section that is the meat and potatoes of autonomy and that we're going to probably need to dig into.
At this point in time, instead of putting the motion in front of us, I'd like to put the opportunity to ask questions. So let's begin with board questions.
I, I would suggest that we're not in a position to put a motion forward at this point. Because I, I had some notes and some things that jumped out at me, but I also didn't understand that the redline parts weren't already agreed to, so I didn't look at that closely. It seems to me that you folks need to get together, back together to go through this because I don't think there's a much point in us debating things that maybe aren't even an issue anyway, right?
Correct.
That's my thought. If we have until July, let's, let's you folks get together and try to work out what you can, and then we can take a look at a fresh version.
Yeah, we're already working on some dates to get together.
Are there any big picture questions that the board has? Not like, you know, little specifics in the, in the contract, but any big picture questions? I know, you know, thinking about location, what that looks like, if there's going to be a spot for us for 2024. I've done a little research on what it would look like to bring in some modular classrooms just for that year. So any information that you might want from us or conversation about that, we are open to at this time.
Yeah, I have a number of questions that are, I don't think they're in the contract. Like the rest of you, I've not had a chance to digest this, but things such as, first of all, Tess O'Brien, who, who is that? Who does she work for?
She's one of our attorneys.
Through what? Through a firm that we've contracted with?
Yes.
Which firm is it?
Which one? Boardman and Clark. Thank you, yeah.
Okay. And some of the big picture items, and we don't have to solve these tonight, but just so you guys have some awareness where, at least where my head's coming from is, is there some type of a minimum number of students guarantee that the school will be supporting? Will those students be net new to the district or will they be transfers from existing WSA School District students? Is there a staffing model that is planned in the pro forma for the first number of years? What is the associated cost for all the components, not just the staffing model? And specifically, what commitments is the WSA School District making and for how long as part of this agreement?
I can answer some of those questions right away. The charter contract is a five-year contract, but if you get to the end of the contract, there are, you know, opportunities if we aren't meeting expectations in the contracts, that there would be opportunity for revocation. But it is a five-year contract, so that, that is what we would be asking for. Our intention and goal for opening would be a pre-K through second. And so that would be four classroom spaces, two multi-age pre-K class room spaces, and then a first grade and a second grade. Those early childhood, we call them, classrooms, which are those multi-age pre-kindergarten and kindergarten mixed age, that would have a full-time staff person within the classroom as well as an aide. And then our first and second grade classrooms would have a single classroom teacher. You know, we don't want to put like a, an exact number on how many students we would need to open, but we would commit to it being a financially solvent model, that we would be bringing in enough income to cover the operating expenses of the charter school. We also need to declare kind of that expectations of opening numbers in our application for grant funds. So same thing, we would be having that expectation of kind of like a general minimum number of students for the school to be economically valuable. So we would be making that same commitment to both you and the federal government for those federal charter school grant funds. That was a list of questions. Can you remind me of the ones I missed?
I, I think you hit some of them, or at least answered them generally. But I would hope that a lot of the specifics for these would make its way into the contract.
They, they have to. They will, because they'll have to for, not just for you guys, but for the federal grant application.
Yeah, I, I think it's going to be a success, but it, it's still a good point. Like, we can't guarantee two full-time staff members for five years if there turns out to be two kids there.
Yep.
You know?
Oh, obviously.
Right? So we need to have something that, that protects us from, I don't think that's going to be a problem, but we just need something in protecting us from that happening.
Yes. Other questions?
Yeah, I have a question about just location because of the style of, of teaching. Obviously, you're looking for an outdoors one, but if that doesn't become the option, you know, and, and this kind of goes to staff too, you know, are there four classrooms at Hawthorne since there's a park near there? Is there extra space at Rib? Depends upon all, all these moving parts work?
Yeah, so-
Right?
We have talked actually quite a bit to Dr. Hiltz about Hawthorne, and we're under the impression that that is not a viable option for other reasons related to the restructuring. I don't, and we've toured Hewitt, Texas as well as Rib Mountain. Do you want to comment, Dr. Hiltz? Just because I don't want to-
Well, there's, as you know, we have some of our schools that have unused space. A lot of it does hinge on board decisions that are still pending. So with the, the options that are available will be, will be clearer once we, you know, once some of those decisions are made.
But as far as our end, I mean, we are, you know, somewhat flexible to being in a space that might have four classrooms that we can fit into year one, and then transitioning to our permanent location year two and on. And just for clarity, we would have four classrooms for year one. We would grow to five classrooms year two, six classrooms year three, all the way up until we have nine classrooms, which would be two early childhood through seventh grade. Initially, we had proposed that we would be going through eighth grade, which is pretty traditional to public Waldorf charter schools. But we wanted to align with your restructuring of having your middle schools just go through seventh grade and then transition at that eighth grade level. So we altered the charter contract to go through seventh, so we kind of would match the model that you had for the rest of your schools.
Other questions?
And again, we have this idea of the potential of, you know, there's not a transition for Hewitt, Texas. This idea of maybe putting two modular classrooms. And so I've reached out to multiple modular classroom companies. They are available for rental for a single year. You know, some of the biggest expense would be moving them on and moving them off, but there, there, it's a very viable option to have us in that space so we could start acclimating to the space that we would end up in, being able to use that outdoor space and really sharing things like the lunchroom and the bathrooms, but having our classrooms in those separate modulators.
And, and I mean, to be clear, like, we, our choice would be Hewitt, Texas. We've toured that. The choice is largely because of the fact of the environment surrounding it. The pedagogy, the Waldorf pedagogy is heavily dependent on the environment around the school. Hewitt, Texas has the pond, they have existing trails, they have an existing outdoor classroom, they have gardens. These are all parts of like kind of the fundamental pieces that makes Waldorf different and makes it appealing to parents, particularly with parents of young children. In addition to like the deep emphasis of technology, a lot of what happens in Waldorf learning happens outside. So it is correct that not every landscape would suit us perfectly. And that's why our first choice, well, our first two choices would be to start at Hewitt, Texas, one way or another, while acknowledging that that school is still in use. But it would allow us to also set up some of the things that we would use in the future in the site that they would be. The federal grants, the monies that come from that grant are very specifically dog-eared, meaning that you cannot invest in things that you cannot pick up and take with you. So we can't buy something like a building because we can't move that if we move. We can't buy a yurt, we can't buy a mobile home, nothing like that. So there's no kind of leniency. But the mobile classrooms, and we are prepared to pay and raise funds to move those classrooms if that's what's wanted and needed. Because it's, the funds are not so high that we feel it's outside of fundraising capability.
And I just wanted to mention one other thing too, reflecting back on the questions asked, I remembered, one of the things that you asked was about students and kind of their demographics and where they're coming from. You know, in our history, working myself as the director and founder of the Tomorrow for Community Charter Schools, in that district, 80% of our students open enrolled and the other 20% were coming from in district students. I don't know that the numbers are going to be the same, but you know, it's something to work off of, of a local public Waldorf school and what their experience was. I think that one thing we're excited about is that there could potentially be this transition of us on site while there was still Hewitt, Texas traditional school operating, just so those students would have and those families would have an opportunity to learn about what our school's going to be, knowing that some of them might feel displaced with their local community school not existing as a traditional school anymore, so that those students and families could be well informed about making a choice between if they would like to apply for the Red Granite Charter School or transition and move to the school as it combines with the other traditional school. But we, in our survey that we did, I guess it's been over a year ago now, you know, we had a very high volume of families express interest in the school. So we're not feeling particularly concerned about filling the classrooms. Most likely, our fear is that we're going to have to do a lottery process and not all students that want to attend are going to be able to have seats in, in the school.
We do anticipate if there's grades, it will be harder to fill. It will be the older grades because you'll be looking at taking kids who, you know, did pre-K kindergarten and first grade in traditional schooling, and that's kind of like a bigger league. And although we meet all of the core kind of principles and we meet all the core guidelines, we meet them in a slightly different order. But the amount of anecdotal evidence I have from just talking to people randomly in the community is sort of, I agree with Chamomile, that I think the bigger concern is having to go into a lottery right away, which is a little less than ideal. Because of course, you don't want to have to say no to people the first time you're But yeah, we're very excited about it. I think also there's value in us being present on Hewitt, Texas too, just to demonstrate that this can be actually like a collaborative process and it doesn't have to be necessarily one where people are feeling competitive or contentious about something that we could coexist. We feel like that's very feasible, given the model that we're looking at. And that, and we're willing to do what we need to do to show that we're collaborative and adaptable.
I think that Cory's point is a very good one for a number of reasons. And I think just to level set on expectations, you guys just heard, right, our friends from Montessori have been waiting 17 years for a building that they were told was going to happen 13, 14 years ago. So if this doesn't come to fruition right away, don't take it personally, it's just how we run.
My question, last question, is, does the building already meet your educational style, right? You wouldn't need any other remodeling other than like secure entrance kind of thing because that's been dedicated to the building?
We, yeah, because, so potentially a little different than other charter schools, the, the things that are different for us happen outside. So inside, like, we could walk right into really any of your elementary schools and be fine, as long as there was enough rooms. And all of them meet that expectation. So the, the primary consideration for us is what's outside the school versus what's in.
Yeah, Hewitt, Texas would potentially be a perfect fit for us.
Yeah.
And we will grow into it with our nine classrooms and enough space for our specials classes such as, you know, arts and music and things like that. It should be a perfect fit size-wise.
We were like very excited about that because we weren't sure when we, we weren't sure going in if it would be large enough.
So I'm going to keep, do you have one? Okay, go ahead.
I have a question about specifically to Hewitt, Texas. What is the capacity there currently?
Depends on your education model, right? But roughly, it's nine classrooms times 25 students, so-
So 900 minus, or nine times 25, so 250 minus.
Do you have it there, Bob? Sorry, I'm just like-
Okay, and-
121. Here he is, K4.
Yeah.
121? Okay. And do you anticipate-
Sorry.
Do you anticipate that number? Like, in your other schools that you oversee in the state, is that a typical size for a Waldorf charter?
Yeah, I mean, I work with charter schools across the country. They vary in size, you know? Some are single-track, some are double-track. So we have some schools that have, you know, 600, 800 kids in it. It really just depends on the community. Our intention is to single-track, which means there's just one classroom per grade. And yeah, 22 to 24 students per grade is pretty typical. I mean, some of our cities have much larger classrooms, 30, some kids per grade, but that's not our intention to have classrooms that big.
We feel like our max would be 22 to 24. And we kind of discussed this at the last meeting because I think that that sort of aligns, it's, it aligns basically where you guys are too.
Close, yeah. It would have been 20s.
Yeah.
Ultimately, K, pre-K through eight?
Seven.
Through seven.
Because matching the, yeah, but seven. And largely, you know, I, most of that, most of those students come in in pre-K and probably track along. Like I said, taking kids from eighth, from sixth grade or into a brand-new pedagogy might be challenging, not impossible. But we anticipate that a lot of the interest will be in those younger age groups and then they'll continue through until they hit middle school.
Others, okay, with that, we're not going to put the motion on the table, which is a good idea, and I had a feeling that that would be the case. You have a lot of work to do with the contract yet. DPI has their regulations and timelines, so you have a lot of work ahead of you or it comes back to us.
Yep.
But thank you very much. Greatly appreciate that.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thanks, Chamomile.
Thank you, Chamomile.
Yeah, thanks so much.
Agenda item number five, Restructuring Proposal for New Elementary Assignments. Dr. Hiltz will share the overview of the elementary restructuring planning.
Right, thank you. So let's take this in phases. First of all, we haven't talked publicly about restructuring much. And just so you know what we've been doing, Cass, if you can go to the next slide, one more. So we've been working with our, the teams you see listed on the left. We've been, you know, seeking, you know, possible, you know, support systems from outside of the district. Within our teams, we've been creating a timeline that you see at a very high level here. In that timeline, we've talked about the tasks that need to be done, the interdependence of the different teams, and, and kind of creating a roadmap, if you will. So what you're looking at here is just a summary, a two-and-a-half-year summary. It goes out to the fall of 2025. Anything in blue is where, you know, the heavier work is, is planned to be done. Anything in pink, that's a review. Yeah, pink would be, well, we have proposed to be a, a board review, but certainly, you know, there could be more of those than anything in green. We would anticipate kind of a timeline for a board approval. So you can see right now in spring of '23, we're focusing heavy on the elementary school situation and the facilities that go along with that, staff engagement and trying to build those staff teams. build those staff teams, a lot of communication going on. Again, focusing on that early learning piece, and then obviously, there's, there's continuous work going on in all of these, just trying to give a sense of when the majority of the work would be, would be done. Hoping that there'd be some board approvals either this spring or summer. You can see again, that, that early learning work going down. The next green would be the elementary school selections that we're going to start talking about tonight. I anticipate that will be an ongoing conversation for a little bit. And then, under that culture tradition ceremony, want to talk about the board's interest in possibly renaming schools or not. So that's, that's part of that work. And then, of course, you can just kind of see how it progresses throughout the, the next two and a half years. Some blank spots in there, yet there is work going on, just haven't filled in some of those areas. We've done quite a bit of work, or started quite a bit of work with that out-of-school time. Mrs. Bowman and I have, she's been doing some great work connecting with our partners, and very excited about some potential there. But anyway, just want to let you see, we've been doing a lot of behind-the-scenes planning work for the last couple of months. Cassie, what's the next slide? I forget. Okay, yeah, so hopefully, this is what we're hoping to accomplish this summer and into early next fall. So significant progress on that five-through-twelve scope and sequence. Middle school schedule renewal. Obviously, talking about elementary school assignments, and then some decision about whether we rename schools. Why don't I pause there for a moment and see if there are questions at this time?
Any at this point? Cory, you look like you're ready to burst there.
I'll let Dr. Hiltz continue first, maybe he'll expand on a couple of things.
Absolutely, sure, we can keep going. There you go. So let's talk a little bit about, we've been doing quite a bit of work around the elementary school assignments. So some of the background work we've been doing is, you know, talking with our Montessori school, talking with Red Granite, talking with Brian Bailey from the Y about the childcare component. So Cassie, why don't you forward this? So you might remember that back in February, this was our, our original thought, that Hewitt would merge into Riverview, grant to Thomas Jefferson, either Franklin into Hawthorne or Hawthorne into John Marshall. And then, of course, Rib into South and Lincoln into G.G. Jones. So those in the, in the dark blue, we believe those could stay. As we continue to look at, as in particular, Kara Rukowski, who's our four-K coordinator, as we continue to look at early learning centers, we think the best space for one of those would be Hawthorne Hills. So we've actually amended our proposal. If you go to the next slide, Cassie. We would propose that Hawthorne merge into Franklin, and that Hawthorne Hills becomes an early learning center. It already has four-K components, it's well-laid out, a lot of exterior classrooms that serve a lot of the needs for early learning centers. Why don't you go to the next slide? We'll go a couple more and then pause. Rib Mountain would be another proposed site for an early learning center. Again, our four-K students with, with, with childcare incorporated into it. And of course, Rib, as we originally talked about, would merge into South Mountain. Next one, Cassie? So Lincoln, as you've heard tonight, the Lincoln serves, is, is a good site for Wausau Area Montessori Charter School. Lincoln would merge into Jones, and then Montessori would, would move in there. And we've got quite a few slides about the Lincoln move. Do, does the board, does the board have questions now, or do you want to hear more about Lincoln and Montessori?
I was going to say, before we go to Lincoln and Montessori, just to back up to Hawthorne to Franklin, is, is there room for the full Hawthorne to move into Franklin, or would there be a need for some boundary adjustment for some Hawthorne to go to Marshall?
They would, they would fit, they would be tight. We've talked about a possible boundary shift there. That's something we would continue to explore and bring back to the board, but they would fit.
Okay.
Another question regarding Hawthorne. So Hawthorne is the preferred site for an early childhood learning center, so it has certain attributes over Franklin. Do those same attributes apply to the upper grades? Would Franklin be better served? Instead of putting early childhood, I'm saying, if it's better for Hawthorne, or better for the early childhood at Hawthorne, there's something about that school that makes it better. Is that going to then detract from the grades that are left at Franklin? For whatever reason, Hawthorne is chosen over Franklin?
Sure. I mean, currently Franklin obviously serves K-five students now, and so they would continue to serve K-four students. The, there are some requirements for four-K programming and, and childcare in terms of access to classrooms from the outside. That's, that's one of the main contributing factors to that site.
And Hawthorne has four-K there now.
Correct.
Right?
Yes.
Sorry, another Hawthorne question. If, if Hawthorne becomes the four-K in early learning center, do we still need to build the road? Or do we save on that?
We've, we've talked about that. You know, the, for, for childcare, the, you know, the accessing and leaving, you know, is staggered a little bit. So we, we want to explore that some more. I don't know about if you had more thoughts on that?
One of the reasons we broke it off, right? We're doing Hawthorne's first phase with the building and Hawthorne's second phase with the site improvement, was one of the reasons why we put it off, because we were still not one-hundred percent sure on this decision. We, we already spent some design effort and money on designing the road, but if you, as a board, didn't want the road, we'd certainly abandon the investment we made in designing it, but we wouldn't abandon the cost of the actual road, so.
But yeah, I was just thinking, because it's needed when, you know, four or five grades of students all arrive and leave at the same time, and then just, you know, daycare is different than that, and even four-K is different than that, so just, okay.
Yep, it's a consideration. We've given some thought, but not completely.
Good question, Lance. My question is, can you make up, and I, I brought this up, because I've left it up on my computer, and Dr. Hiltz will be able to see it when he's done making his note.
Yes.
You gave us a little chart from Scenario A, showing capacities based upon your original merger.
Okay.
Mergers, and, and what we'd have for number of students, and then over and under capacity with the percentages. So if you can find it, and obviously create a new one for our reference with this proposal, that would be handy just to be able to have that.
For all the schools?
Yeah, the same as what you made before, but just make your switches, because you have nothing at Franklin, but you, you know, because Franklin was going to Hawthorne, but now you've reversed it, so that we, we understand what's happening in each building again?
Yes.
It would be a good view, so that we could see the students, how many students we'd have in the buildings.
Sure.
And also on Hawthorne, I don't know if this is going to be touched on in the future, but we spoke about the last time we talked about this, this childcare in one or two places, we did ask for a financial pro forma, Lance. I think it was your question in terms of, how much is the district investing to support childcare for the greater community, not for Wausau School District?
Yep.
Needs. So do we have any information on what that is going to be?
No. Mr. Bailey needs a site to calculate the, the capacity and the costs. So that's why I wanted to come to you first, to see if this scenario is agreeable. We will, if, if there's some promise here, we would get with him in early June and start doing that kind of work. I've, I've shared your requests with him, and certainly it's something he can do.
I would, I would say Mr. Bailey's not going to get a site until we get a cost.
But I think it's like step by step, you know, so we kind of give the head nod that, no, don't even go down that road.
Right.
That's kind of what you're looking for, right?
This is early, yes, this is early.
Everybody sees the sausage that's just being made kind of thing, where it's like, you're not coming to us with, this is the final decision board, prove it, it's give us some direction. Because if you're saying, don't even consider Hawthorne Hills, then you guys aren't going to get, you know, right? That's kind of where we're at.
You got it.
It's not like something is set until it is, right?
Yeah, I, maybe I'm just confused over what the actual approval is going to be. So I'll, I'll wait until that is read.
And actually, you know, tonight, I mean, this is a, these are obviously big decisions. So we're bringing you the work we've done to date. We can answer any questions we can, but also, if you've got questions that could guide, you know, our future work, too. So this is all, like you say, we're making sausage now.
So I'm, I'm kind of hoping that we're actually having a discussion and not looking for a real approval tonight, but because I think there's cost questions, you know, I, and I'm sure I'm, I feel that I'm, might be getting, asking for too much detail, but you know, the, some, a little bit of the decisions of why, you know, you, you flipped it, Franklin's going into Hawthorne, but, and I think I'd be interested in a border change, too. If the, if the capacity at Franklin becomes a little too high, then some of the, excuse me, Hawthorne kids really need to go over to John Marshall, right? I guess there's some, back, you know, whatever your meetings have been, a little, a few of those details at least, to share with us.
Sure.
I'm not suggesting that we sit and, you know, have that whole conversation as this group as well, but you get us the details, and we could probably avoid that.
Absolutely.
So obviously, you're trying to identify what, you know, kind of finalize this a little bit, and then where are the two early learning centers? And obviously, I think that makes sense, kind of, one on each side for accessibility. I guess what I'd be curious in is, what is a, what is a backup plan if the early childcare piece just isn't viable because of costs or whatever? You know, would we then say, okay, we're going to house all four-K students at one? Or, you know, what, what are some of the alternatives if early childhood, early childcare, just, we can't get it across the finish line?
Yeah, we have talked about that, too. We can certainly share some thoughts there.
Good questions. Continue.
Okay, all right. So if Mrs. Channel might want to come forward, she and Bob Tess have created a few slides for you from our previous conversation about Montessori moving into Lincoln. So, thank you.
Thank you. I've got a few slides for you that we've been working on for the last two weeks, some of them we're working on today. As a matter of fact, we had some good questions come up since we posted this last week. And if you looked at this on Board Book on Friday, you might see a couple of slides that are new, some parts of slides that are new, just to provide more information. Developing a pro forma for something like this is not an exact science, but I hopefully included enough raw data and enough numbers where you can almost create pro formas of your own, or at least digest what it costs to do this versus this. I did include a pro forma, but it's not exact. So some fiscal considerations, along with some non-fiscal considerations. I tried to separate in these three slides with, we've got Montessori students, think of them as not being in a building at all, and we're going to choose to either put them in Lincoln or put them in MAN. And when we put them in MAN, to make room, we would go through with the referendum proposed addition. So if we have our Montessori students, next year, we're expecting about one hundred eleven Montessori students, I think that's a pretty accurate number. Mathematically projecting that using cohort survivor methodology and understanding that it's going to be pre-K eight by 2033, 2033, we're expecting that number to almost double, two hundred sixteen students. If we put those students in Lincoln, we obviously would consider, or we would need some capital improvements. We would no longer have to add square footage to MAN. Not using the Horace Mann referendum budget may or may not be considered savings. We have five-point-three million dollars available there. If we reapplied it to somewhere else, not even the Lincoln Building, but anywhere else, I feel that's savings, because we'd be reapplying it to other buildings that were still in need of, and are in need of capital improvements. We'd no longer be able to sell the Lincoln property if we put students in Lincoln. The building would require some continual maintenance, capital improvements, as well as operational costs, which I captured in the pro forma. Lincoln, from what you heard earlier tonight, and what we already felt we understood before, we heard the comments from tonight, would be a more appealing location for a permanent Montessori school, and thus could lead to more enrollment growth in the future. And enrollment growth does add revenue, but it also adds cost and staffing. So we need to at least be aware of that. If we take those students and we put them in the Horace Mann location, considering that to be an improved Horace Mann location, that's a little bit larger, we would have to do some necessary improvements. Capital improvement already is inside the current referendum budget. If you haven't caught that number already, we've mentioned it several times, five-point-three million dollars worth of capital improvements at Horace Mann. That includes additional square footage, but it also includes some remodeling of the current space. We would be able to sell the Lincoln Building. Staying at Horace Mann would require continual maintenance and capital improvements, especially to the marginal additional square footage that we don't have to improve or maintain right now. We don't have to heat it and cool it right now. It'd be an additional sixty-seven hundred square feet. Horace Mann is a slightly less appealing location for a Montessori location, from what we heard earlier tonight. And of course, as well as both, we do have enrollment growth, and that does come with expenses that are added. Now, these are all fiscal considerations, but we don't, we don't see a lot of numbers up there. But we do see numbers on the very next slide. And here's where, I, I don't expect everybody to create their own pro forma, but if you wanted to pick apart different parts and better understand the independent elements of the pro forma, think about if you put the students in Lincoln. Eliminates the need for the five-point-three million dollars of investment at MAN, but it would require, and there's going to be more about the specifics of this three-point-six million dollar investment, it would require about three-point-six million dollars to be invested at Lincoln, which we would have available if you, as a board, reallocated it. Moving to the Lincoln space requires maintaining about forty-eight thousand seven hundred square foot of building, as well as four-point-seven-five acres of property. And if we stayed there, we'd have to continue maintaining it, heating it, cooling it, and maintaining it in every regard. If we take those students and put them in the improved Horace Mann location, staying at MAN does require five-point-three million dollars of capital improvements already in the referendum. Building a sixty-seven hundred square foot addition will require maintenance that we otherwise wouldn't have had to maintain, its additional square footage with cooling and heating and maintaining and cleaning and all of those things. Staying at Horace Mann allows the district to sell Lincoln for seven-hundred-sixty-seven thousand dollars after the fall of 2025. That's data that we got from considering every school property that's been sold in the last two years. And if we consider every one of them, and we look at the square footage of all those school properties, and we take a couple outliers and throw them out on both ends, and it ends up being about fourteen dollars per square foot that you can sell a school for in Wisconsin, at least recently. So that's where that number came from. In the pro forma, we end up taking today's dollars, and we don't sell it for a few years, so we index it for inflation over a couple of years. How about if I turn this slide over to you, Elizabeth?
So just some of the non-fiscal considerations, just as you're making decisions. I first want to thank the families that came to speak on behalf of our school tonight. They covered a few of these. But one of the things that we're really focused on is making sure our children understand the value of our Wausau community. And being centrally located would put us close to Marathon Park, and there's lots of things that happen there throughout this school year. It also allows us to be on the city bus line, and we're also close to that UW Stevens Point extension that's right in front of that property, as well as the MOP. I know that sounds not so great, but we, we have children that are going to go into our workforce, and we don't know who and what they are going to want to be. So we want to be able to give them every opportunity to learn about all the great things that we have in this community, so that they go to college, and then they'll want to come back and be a contributing member. So being centrally located is great, would be great. We also want to make sure that we are offering as many classrooms as possible. So you'll see that on the right-hand side, we have. So you'll see that on the right hand side, we have drawn out that tentative plan for eight classrooms, which would be two of each. We would be able to expand that a little bit if we had a little bit more space to allow for 234 students. I know that we can't project out how many children will want to come to Montessori, but we often hear that they didn't know we existed. Oh, you were inside of Horace Mann. So being able to be more accessible to everyone is really important, too. One of the things that I want to point out on the right hand side, when we originally drew the design, we drew just for the classroom spaces. So we would have to adjust that as we've listened to our encore staff over the last few years since that 2020 referendum that we were hoping to pass. Our our encore staff need their own educational space to be able to store art supplies in a closet and then trying to drag that as kind of like being an art teacher on a carton. That doesn't work out very well. Same thing for a music teacher. She does a phenomenal job and she has ukuleles and recorders and all of that that we just saw in our spring concert. So we need to make sure that we have allocated space. In addition, storage, we do not have any storage built in. When we were originally drawing the plans, we thought we would still be able to share like art room and music room and storage space. But with the change to fifth, sixth and seventh graders, the fifth grader's content that they need through their curriculum is a little bit different and they will need to use those spaces more. So we would have to draw that back into our design.
We will certainly have opportunity for questions, but I think a few of them might be answered on the next slide or two. So I'll proceed. Feel free to interrupt me if you have questions on a slide that's up here, though. What would we do with the current Lincoln location if we wanted to make it Montessori capable, so to speak? The number came up earlier on a slide, 3.6 million instead of 5.3 at Horace Mann. And that 3.6 million would be for LED lighting replacements and electrical infrastructure, air handling unit replacement, gymnasium cooling, domestic water and galvanized piping replacement. The next two boiler replacement mass notification system was not in a number that you probably saw in 2020. We developed and and revealed a number in 2020 for what kind of investment we would need to make in Lincoln to make it Montessori. The ones with asterisks are additional that we would improve with 3.6 million. Remodeling classrooms in the library to make it Montessori, uh, more Montessori like, I guess. Remodeling family consumer science and STEM labs, gym stage cubby replacement signage, flexible furniture and garden, additional windows to four of the classrooms, toilet room additions to children's house classrooms. Those would be the improvements that we would ask for Lincoln to be made if Montessori students were to go there. Now, on the flip side, if we go back to that 2020 number, if you recall, we developed a 2020 number, what it would take to improve Lincoln to the point where we could put Montessori in that building. It was a pretty large number. You're going to see that on the next slide. But some things that we excluded from that 2020 scope for this current capital improvement, now keep in mind, we did this with all of our elementary schools. We took all of our elementary educational adequacy dollar amounts and we trimmed them by about $60 million for this 2022 referendum. And we said, we might get to those later. And we said, let's figure out what we want to do with the restructure before we invest in every one of these buildings. Maybe we'll only invest in some of them. So that 2020 number got smaller by these amounts or these items at least. The exterior window replacement, not an immediate priority, but we can't forget about it because eventually it would be a capital improvement deferred maintenance need. Roofing replacement, we actually did that in the last two years since 2020 on our own dime, so to speak. Ventilation system replacement was included with a full building remodel, but not with moving Montessori in. UPS and data closet backup, not an immediate priority, but again, we can't forget about it. Flooring and finish replacements, not an immediate priority, can't forget about it. Whole building remodeling, we're remodeling this building a little bit differently. The remodeling that we needed for a Lincoln K five or a K four is slightly different than the remodeling needed for Montessori. And that's recognized in the numbers. Playground and equipment surface, not an immediate priority, and it's in pretty decent shape. The main office moved to the north west corner per Montessori. That's not necessary. We can keep the main office right where it is now. So if we take these last two slides that, again, don't have a lot of numbers on, and we start introducing numbers and try to reconcile what happened to that 2020 number and what did it become today? And how many improvements and what kind of liability is still hanging out there that we can't totally ignore? I wish I'd caught this in time, but I'd like to address the two positive numbers first because I think we can wrap our brain around it a little bit more. In 2020, we had about $8.6 million in capital improvements needed in that building. In three years, it grew to $10,760,000. It also grew by the two items that I said weren't in the original 2020. So the next positive number, 646,000, it grew a little bit more. Okay? So the number from 2020, 8.6 million, inflation and a couple of things that weren't in it, ventilation and the other one. Escapes me exactly what it was. There were two of them. Okay? And now that number is going to get a little bit smaller. Those 2023 projects, if we do that with current referendum dollars, the need just got smaller because we took care of it. Referendum projects, we do have 214,000 in the current referendum. That's earmarked for Lincoln for safety and security. So it just got smaller because we took care of a few projects. Capital funded roof project that we did over the last few years, that one's done, so it got a little bit smaller. The simplified remodeling concept, conceptually, Lincoln needs different things for Montessori versus a K four, it got smaller yet. So if we do the math, it leaves us with about 3.881 million, $3,881,000. That's kind of out there yet as a liability that we can't forget about. That is a top, top priority to do this year, but it's kind of a future priority, just like the $60 million in all the capital improvements at the elementaries that we took off to make that referendum just safety and security at the elementary. I think the next slide is probably going to have a lot more numbers on it, it's the profile. But this is a good time to really pause, I think, and to pause and maybe address any questions that you have or just check for your understanding of what we're going through or allow you to make comments.
Just a a quick one. So 5.3 million is what was in the referendum for Horace Mann work for Montessori.
Correct.
We're saying 3.6 million to address Lincoln to make it Montessori-ish, if that's a word. So that leaves 1.7 million from, and I know there's different ways to categorize, but let's for argument's sake, let's say it was earmarked to do the work at Horace Mann for for Montessori. What is the thinking of not using that 1.7 million, or maybe it was the thinking, to address some of those items that are still hanging out there, to your point that we can't forget about?
We can do that. We we and you as a board really could do that. It would be a pretty clean transaction to do that. Take the whole 5.3 and take it to Lincoln with the Montessori students and improve Lincoln 3.6 plus some ventilation, some UPS and things like that. We were met with, you know, coming up with a pro forma for what we need at Lincoln. And we didn't want to mix it with, because this referendum didn't really bring the elementaries up to ed adequacy. That was kind of the next referendum. So we didn't want to overdo it and take the whole 5.3, right? But you could do that as a board if you wanted to decide to do that.
If I could, because we had that conversation earlier. Elizabeth, I thought you brought a really interesting perspective when you talked about doing the walkthrough with Nexus. Can you share kind of maybe it's a little bit of more of an answer to to why we may not do those things?
So when I went and did the walkthrough, and some of you already know, I've been mentored by Bob all year about getting my 08 license and just trying to be fiscally responsible and and making sure that whatever changes we did to the Lincoln building would give us what we needed for Montessori. So Montessori is not coming back in five, 10, 15 years saying, oh, we now need this, we forgot about that. So I went through and walked through with Nexus and we really did look at what absolutely needed to happen. And everything that I handed over to Nexus, they came back with that 3.7 million. So some of these other areas I'm still learning about as far as boilers and things like that. But it really, that 3.7 million will give us a building that will function adequately for Montessori that includes all the things we have asked for for many years. So I don't know what that is. So I just, I felt like we did a really great job collaboratively walking through that building and just selecting the things that we absolutely needed.
Okay, but we could, I mean, Bob, the end of the
Yep.
It it could be addressed. I mean, many of us have been around here long enough who know if you don't do it when there are funds somewhat available, the chances of it getting done are slim to none.
Agree 100%. This would be the the menu to choose from, so to speak. And we would need to understand that on the pro forma, your nonfiscal elements that would lead you in a direction of Lincoln wouldn't be as strong, right? But at the same time, if you keep in mind, we're taking care of some deferred maintenance, it would be every bit as strong, it'd be the same, right?
Well, I think much like when I brought up some of the issues of do we need more space at West? Do we need no parking at, you know, South? These are types of things that we need to look at, but we need to get further along in the, I think you pointed out, like West is a big one yet. We need to get further along in the referendum construction before we know how much money we quote unquote have left.
True.
Let's hope that we have money left.
Well, I think I think there's a good point here as well, and you stated it about the fact that if you have to take care of something, it's going to have to be taken care of, like the HVAC, the boilers, things of that fashion. I mean, I have a little liking to see all of that. And I walked through Franklin and or, excuse me, Lincoln and took a look at some of that. Those are going to be in great need. So I'd hate to not take care of those things that need to be taken care of and then not have it taken care of and it's going to cost us more and more because the boilers become much more efficient, the newer ones that are out there and their redundancies and things of that fashion. I'd hate to not do that.
Well, I think one of the things that Lance, I know you've brought up in the past that I think we at least need to acknowledge, I really appreciate that you did that walkthrough and kind of found out what are the things we really need, is while there's 1.7 million left, it's also we kind of have to purchase Lincoln with that 1.7 million, right? At the cost of 767,000 because it would have been inflow to the district to sell that building. So that's a Montessori expense that really on some levels could be included in that 5.3 million allocated dollars that I think we, you know, at least need to acknowledge, right? So not that these things aren't super important and we do need to keep in mind as upcoming expenses, that's an additional expense because you're also getting a building, right? So I I mean, I really, I love Montessori and and the whole model. So I think it's fantastic what you've brought forward, but I just think that's a point that's important to keep in mind.
That is acknowledged on the pro forma.
Right.
To that.
Right.
We'll get a chance to look at the numbers a little bit. But I think conceptually, we need to understand there's good and there's bad, right? And there are costs over here, there are costs over here. There are opportunity costs over here that you're missing out on. There's revenue that you could be selling Lincoln for. It's pretty dynamic, right? We've got some student growth over here. Student growth comes with more revenue. Student growth, if it's from outside the district, is different than if it's from inside the district. Staffing costs go up with student growth also. And we'll try to build that in to the pro forma that you're going to see in a little bit. So maybe we'll take another couple of slides and then pause a little bit.
I just want to say, Elizabeth, I think after Bob leaves us in six weeks, you you will learn how to spend money again, okay?
Business manager is ultimate compliment. She's not spending a lot.
Well, with all of this, we needed a little comic relief.
I'll offer some, you know, and when you you don't hear high pitch, and I hardly hear anything, I barely hear that, but the youngsters in the
Is there something being? Get hearing aids.
Young people are. So we've got some of these numbers built into the pro forma a little while, but let's just talk about capacity. And we've got capacity on our current Horace Mann. We've got capacity on a projected Horace Mann. And we've got number of students really, and the capacity's on the right. And we've got capacity at Lincoln. And we'd be remiss if we didn't talk about the capacity at Horace Mann once the link, once the Montessori students are gone and the projected enrollment at Montessori or at MAN. So we've got the Horace Mann projected enrollment up here for 25, 26. So in 25, 26, considering we're no longer going to be a 6, 7, 8, we're going to be a 5, 6, 7. And that also happens to be the year when our cohorts coming through, our fifth and sixth graders are pretty small on the east side, just happens to be. So I think that enrollment number in 25, 26 for MAN might be a little bit understated, but it's math and that's what happened, right? With cohort survivor method. So 549 enrollment, our capacity as a middle school, not as a Montessori necessarily, but if that whole thing were turned to a middle school and we had houses, 1,058 would be the capacity. That obviously screams the need for maybe alternative programming or something else or there'd be space to do something. So it it works into the discussion at least.
And what are some options for that extra space? Because, you know, everything we decide right now is all connected. So we can't just blindly say, let's just do it and have a school that's half capacity. What what sort of things would fit in there that we currently are, you know, leasing space for?
Yeah, we don't lease space for a lot of our programs. But certainly, we know Wave is looking for a space. They're currently here and doesn't work well for them. Bob has some data about Peer, which we do lease space. EEA might be looking for a new home. So we've got a few options. Again, we can, once we get some direction from the board, we can start to to place some programs in there and see what kind of space we might use and and whatever savings we might get.
This is the current enrollment and starting with next fall. We think we're pretty accurate and we're going to have a few eighth graders that just roll up and a few seventh graders that roll up from sixth and and so forth. So next year, we think we're pretty accurate because those are actually people that said they're coming to Montessori next fall, right? Beyond that, it ends up using, again, a mathematical model for projecting how many roll up from first grade into second grade and second to third and so forth. And sometimes we lose ones going from fifth grade to sixth grade because fifth grade is an elementary school and sixth grade is a middle school. So if you're in Montessori and there's a middle school over there, sometimes they feel the need to go to middle school. And if we are in our own location at Lincoln, that might not have happened to the same degree. You can speculate, but so purely mathematical, at least for three years, enrollment growth. And now, there are a lot of numbers here. There's a lot of numbers up here, but what I tried to do is capture the scenario of keeping Montessori at Horace Mann and selling Lincoln on top. And these are all stated as expenses. So negative numbers that are in parentheses, you can think of as a reduced expense or revenue, doesn't really matter. It's not spending more money. It's either generating revenue or spending less money. And then each year is captured with a sum at the bottom and then the sum total of a 10 year sum at the end. And then on the bottom, I've got if we relocated Montessori to Lincoln. And some of these numbers up here, you're going to recognize, you recognize 5.312 million dollars up on top. If we keep Montessori at Horace Mann, we're talking about investing 5.312 million, right? You'll also see up there, we wouldn't have to improve the Lincoln site. Current referendum, 214,000 in the current referendum for Lincoln, safety and security. We would not need to invest that. A little bit over the 767,000 that we would sell Lincoln for. That's neither a negative or positive expense, that's revenue, so it's a negative number. Then we've got routine maintenance, utilities, custodial staff, the operations. If you look at keeping them at MAN, you've got 10,000, 5,000, 53,000. If you look below Lincoln, higher expenses. them at Mann, you've got 10,000, 5,000, 53,000. If you look below, Lincoln, higher expenses. We've got 28,000, excuse me, 24,000 square feet on top, we've got 48,000 square feet on the bottom. And then even to make that more extreme, the 28, 24, excuse me, 1,000 square feet on top, only 6,700 is new. The old square footage that we have at Mann, we would still need to maintain, we would still need to heat it, cool it, and clean it, and all, because something would go there, right? So a lot of those numbers aren't the factor of 24,000 versus 48,000, it's more of a factor of 48,000 versus 7,000 or 8,000, right? So that's why those operational expenses are so much less at Mann than they are at Lincoln. So if we do this, we just have to go in with the eyes wide open and know that the non-fiscal considerations, you know, need to be there, as well as these fiscal considerations. Below the operational, utilities, routine maintenance, and custodial staff, we've got a section with student growth, and the numbers are a little bit smaller in italics, those are relative to next fall, relative to 2023, 24, how many additional students we would expect. And we've got every one of them coming with revenue, and increasing 13, and then another 14, and then another two, and then another five, those are from the cohort survivor method, that's just projecting enrollment going forward, over the next 10 years. And then below, going to Lincoln, because the top ones, the cohort survival method, talks about how Montessori grows in its current location. So in the bottom, we just added a few. So you notice between going up 13 and going up 19, that's a difference of six. The very next year, going up 37 versus 44, that's a difference of seven, the next year's a difference of eight. So it at least acknowledges that the Montessori school in a Lincoln location is more appealing, more appealing, so it would come with more enrollment growth, and that's acknowledgement of that. And then the student growth revenue, it's a negative number, because it's revenue, right? And then it also comes with additional staffing costs for teachers, so that's a positive number, additional costs. And if you go all the way to the right, the 10-year total on top is 995,000, the 10-year total on the bottom is 785,000, and if you accept these assumptions, at least, we know they're wrong, which direction or by what degree they're wrong by, we don't know, but it's about 209,000 to the good by choosing to put Montessori in the Lincoln location. Now, the layout's not going to change on the next slide, but the next slide just wipes out all the student growth data. It said, what if we just assumed the student growth was either going to stay the same or not occur at all, then you get quite, quite a different picture. Then you've got just the capital improvements and operational costs, and you don't assume that more students are coming in either one of them? No, it looks like it's the other way. So 1.2 million more if we were going to move to Lincoln. That's what makes the non-fiscal considerations so much, so important. We could probably change a couple assumptions and make this thing flip from a negative to a positive quite easily.
And I actually asked for this slide, even though I support Montessori going to Lincoln, because I can't help myself, I like to see stuff from the other side. And the reason I asked for this is, the prior slide assumes not only the growth, it assumes, like you said Bob, that all the growth comes with revenue, but moving in the Lincoln and having a student that was going to attend Jones, for example, come to Montessori, doesn't give us any additional revenue. And so, rather than guessing at what the growth will be and assuming that it's all outside the district, because that's the only growth that gives us revenue, I wanted, I knew it wouldn't be great, but I wanted to see it anyway, even though I support the move, because I was curious of what it would look like without that.
Relative to your question, if we go back to this slide, and we take all the student growth, and we scale it back by a third, and we say, 2/3 of those students are going to be new, 1/3 of the students are going to come from elsewhere, that 209 positive flips to about a 250 negative, so that's how close we are. So, it's kind of another scenario that's in between both of these, right? If we say, this is our student growth, but 2/3 of it is from outside the district, and in there is how many students we'd lose that we wouldn't if we, you know, that gets kind of complicated, but how many students would we not lose is worth the same as how many we've gained. So, I think this adds a lot, this is a good slide, so, good recommendation. And then the next one on data, maybe Elizabeth, you can take this one.
So, we continue to draw students from every neighborhood school in our district. So I just broke this down as our demographics for this year, just so that you were able to see. I highlighted and read that the students we have from the east side, blue, students coming from the west side, and green is just open enrollment, that is currently coming from Merrill, DC Everest, and Marathon. So, I just wanted to make sure that I shared that here. We currently, as of right now, have a waitlist in 4th grade, so 1st, 2nd, 3rd, and 4th grade, we have waitlists of 3 to 5 students, just depending, so I wanted to make sure you're aware of that. I feel the same pain of being, having to say no to a family, because if we can fit the 2 of the children of the family, but not the 3rd, we usually don't maintain that family, so that's really, really difficult for us. I, I've already talked about, people don't know that we exist, 6 years later, they will still say, where? Do you have preschool children? And I said, not yet, we will, but just making sure that people are aware, sometimes the, the word charter is difficult for people, because if they come from other states, charter means something different, it means that you have to pay. So, I'm really trying to get all of our families in the Wausau School District to understand that none of our charter schools do you have to pay any tuition for, and that's really, a really important part. We currently cap our enrollment at 18, because if we go any higher than that, the children just don't fit. We have classrooms now in Horace Mann, that could fit 30 Horace Mann students sitting in desk facing a BenQ board, but the way that we operate in our school, we cannot fit that many children. So, for example, in one of our E2 classes, we have 14 children in that class that typically could fit 30, but we need space, and part of the reason is they built a boat, so that took up a little bit of space this year. And I talked about waitlists, typically, what I've noticed since being here, like, our families don't want to stay on a waitlist, they want to know that they have a place, that their child is going to have a spot in a classroom at a school. So, if we start off with a waitlist, like I've just shared, by the time we start in the fall, that waitlist will probably dwindle, because they will get settled in their neighborhood school, and typically, we don't regain them back, because parents don't want to pull their children out unless they have to relocate. And if you've been out to Horace Mann lately, you'll see a cute little playground out there, that is not ours, that belongs to the special ed department of Horace Mann, and so they've been kind enough to share it with us. You may have heard stories many years ago of, why is there only one swing out there? Well, it was not built for us, so we've taught our children patience and grace and, and share the one swing out there. And the addition that would be permitted through building onto Horace Mann, still does not alleviate the problem that our children would have to enter our school through the playground. And so, during different times of day when children need to be dropped off after appointments, they would have to go through the 6th, 7th, and 8th graders that are, that are on the playground during that time. And I do have families that will often say, you know, well, how do you see that working for a 5-year-old, walking through that? And I said, I understand your concern, but we've done a really great job of keeping our children safe in the building so far, we would come up with some way to address that, but it's just not ideal.
Something to think about on this graph that might draw you to an incorrect conclusion that you have to be aware of is the open enrollment impact. We've got students that are showing up there as Riverview students that are going to Montessori, and we think, well, they're going to be our students either way. Well, they may only be our students if we have Montessori, right? We need to at least accept that. Just like if students come from outside the district versus come from our other schools that are currently, right now, open enrolled, right? They will appear as a red or a blue, but really, they're almost like a green, right? They're not our students now, at least we're paying open enrollment tuition, and now we get them to stay here. So, sometimes you can draw an incorrect conclusion, thinking, oh, we only have that many out of district students, but the open enrollment plays a factor. This is kind of the last slide that, that almost was a result, not directly, but was informed by the board meeting 2 weeks ago, when we asked you to make a decision on how we were going to design Horace Mann. Were we going to design Horace Mann with a Montessori addition, or continue designing the Horace Mann building without the Montessori addition? We're hoping by the end of the slide deck, and when you take action tonight, we'll know enough about the action that you did take, for us to inform that design, because we're, we're on pause right now for the last 2 weeks. We're not designing Horace Mann for anything, Montessori or no Montessori. And we need to remind ourselves once in a while that design costs are real, and we can't just design 2 buildings and pick the one we like in the end. So, the sooner we learn about which design we want to pursue, the better off we're going to be. So how about if I turn it back to you, or, or if there's still any questions about Montessori at Lincoln, we can do that.
Why don't you stay there?
Yes, we may have more questions than we think.
The 214 for the secure entrance at Lincoln, you rolled that into 3.6?
No, no, that's a...
So that would still be on top of the 3.6?
I'm seeing if this is on here, and it's not on here, so, yes.
Okay.
Good question. Wish I could give more of a definitive answer, but I'm pretty sure the answer I gave was right.
Okay, good, thank you. So continuing with the proposal in terms of, of elementary school use, you heard earlier that the Red Granite Charter School would be interested in Hewitt, Texas, so that could move into Riverview, Red Granite would, would be housed there. Next one?
Sorry, are you doing it, or mine?
Um, this one, all right. We would propose that Grant would move into Thomas Jefferson, Grant would go up for sale, we could calculate an estimated cost there. We talked about using some underutilized spaces, we talked a little bit about Horace Mann tonight, there could be others. There's a question about what we currently pay for lease costs. Bob, you want to speak to that a little bit?
Sure. The best one we can talk about is Peer, because that is a space that we actually do lease, the other ones come with a cost, but those costs are embedded in upkeep of the building itself. So the easiest one to kind of pick off to the side is our Peer program on Thomas Street, 111 West Thomas, and the annual lease is probably about 26,000 or 27,000 of that, and the rest of it is utilities, and snow plowing, and yard maintenance, and some of those things. If the roof failed, they'd fix it, obviously, so we wouldn't have to worry about that. What if we need to fix some of the smaller things? We do that, so.
Thank you. And other conversations that are happening, we have some alternative programming that we're exploring that currently doesn't exist, and if we had spaces, you know, we might be able to create some other alternative programs as well. Next one, there you go. So obviously, we're not looking to take action tonight's committee meeting, but at this point, the, the question would be, you know, what information, I've got some of your notes here about costs and capacities, things like that, what questions would the board want more information on before you could consider a decision?
The, the timing, I think I saw on one of the first slides, you were hoping to have action on this by like the end of summer or fall, but then, but the Montessori one would be better if we made a decision sooner than that.
Correct, yeah, that one, like you say, we paused design for that.
Yeah, okay.
What's the square footage of Hewitt, Texas? I'm just trying to calculate what, what it would fetch on the open market at 14 bucks a foot.
My question to everybody would be, are we going to look at this as a package deal with the parts that have to be part of the package, or are we going to break this part into the pieces that make sense earlier, and wait on the other ones?
877.
Because that's part of what you were looking for, Lance, right? We, we have some classes associated with Lincoln and the Montessori piece now.
Yeah, like I said at the last meeting, I didn't, I didn't think it would make a lot of sense to move forward and design Horace Mann, if we, and not make the decision on Montessori, and then make the Montessori decision after that, unless we have to, but I think it would be much better if we could make our decision now, and frankly, I support what has been presented. And I, I think that would then allow the Horace Mann design to go forward and not have to be held up by our decision on Montessori.
There was a question about Hewitt, Texas square footage, Hewitt, Texas square footage, 20,877, I do not have it right here, but it also has a decent mark property, so that might throw off that 14 dollars per square foot.
So roughly 300,000 is what we would not get by not selling it and putting Red Granite there, to consider the way you talk, like, for Lincoln?
The advantage of Red Granite, though, is that if it doesn't work, we still sell the building. The only way we don't sell the building is if the program works, and it's making revenue, and it, so it's a win-win, because it, it becomes a revenue generator, or it doesn't. If, if it doesn't work, then, then we still have the building to sell, but I, I think it is going to work, but...
Did you have a question? I'm sorry, just, you, you...
Well, I have, I, I kind of just have another general question, because, you know, we've stated in other public meetings at various sites, right, that we're, we were going to have more of a separate discussion on elementary schools, and, you know, to my knowledge, you know, you guys had, I think, 4 other sessions the last couple months, so I'm wondering, you know, is, is there going to be more public discussion, is there going to be more engagement? You know, are people going to be able to continue the discussion of where this is going, or, or is this group here going to have those discussions and get email feedback directly from public members that want to share it with us as board members?
So we have been continuing, we've changed our communication strategy, we used to, you know, schedule large meetings, and we didn't get a lot of attendance, so Diana and I have been going out to, you know, different service groups, PTOs, we've got another one coming up next week, I think. We were trying to target groups of like 20 to 40, but what we find is that at that, at that size, people are very comfortable asking questions, and so they've been productive. The, these questions have, you know, some of them have been answered, the, the interest of the different groups varies, so I would say that this is the conver, this is the start of that conversation, and if people are interested in, you know, coming here to have the conversation, or having us come to them, that's, that's been our strategy the last several months.
If the goal is to move forward, I guess with the Horace Mann, Montessori situation, I appreciate, you know, hearing everything that we've heard tonight, I appreciate the, you know, ability to take a step back and be somewhat conservative in what's being asked for, knowing that some of those dollars can go on to support maybe some other critical areas within the district that will ultimately impact, you know, students as they move on to secondary education, if they stay within our school district. So I, I mean, for me, I, I think there's been a lot of thought and care into this, and I think strategically, you know, going forward, that it makes a lot of sense. I guess, and it doesn't have to be answered now, I'm curious, do we target any ads to outside districts, you know, for Montessori? Actually, someone that I know who has young kids coming up is very interested in this platform, and, and has said would not probably keep their child in the district if it were not for looking at something, a platform like this. So, you're right, Bob, that, you know, looking at those that are in, already in our district and going to Montessori, you know, very likely may not be, you know, because they would either homeschool or do something else, so. So I, I, I think it makes a lot of sense to move forward in that direction, in my opinion.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't, I don't think there's a necessity to act on every one of these decisions, but if we see that the delay with the Horace Mann design, I mean, that's costing us dollars too, you know, all of that delay. And so, can we break up, you know, some of these decisions that we've heard more specifically about tonight, and with regard...
Well, I think that's been the plan all, all along, even in the grid we looked at earlier, and even when we discussed it back in January and February, it was discussed that it was going to be, it was going to keep coming back to us, and there's going to be board action along the way, along the way, things are going to have to decide, and so now we have one, which is making the decision on whether to keep Montessori at Mann or move it to Lincoln.
I do want to point out that in order to move Montessori into Lincoln, we have to do the Lincoln to Jones merger, and the only way to, we can't do that with 5th grade, they don't fit. So, so this really is predicated on the concept of the whole restructure.
Well, but the whole restructure, whole restructure, including... Well, but the whole restructure, whole restructure, including the moving of fifth grade, was voted on and approved by the board.
Right. I just want to be clear.
Right, so that, that was decided by the board. It's the steps along the way and/or hitting a roadblock, it's insurmountable. We've said, you know, that, those are the things along the way that we're having to deal with. And this is, this is one of those.
So if we don't take action tonight on moving, you know, or at least coming forward with saying that we are going to move Montessori into Lincoln, then we're waiting another two weeks delay on our Horace Mann design.
Correct.
Which.
Yeah, and we can't take official action tonight.
We need to take, I firmly believe we need to take some sort of action and I don't care if we pull it out separately. But I think some action needs to be taken. And I for one support, you know, Miss Montessori going to Lincoln as well. So can I make a motion to pull that out specifically?
Well, what we can do is we can put the motion on the table to begin with, then make amendments to that motion.
Well, then I'm going to make the motion to approve the school mergers as assigned and presented.
Second. Any further questions?
Yeah, well, my comment would be then, and maybe this, it needs to be on the amended one. But then you need to have the more specific things that need to happen at Jones besides, wouldn't you? If there's anything over security issues to house those students.
No, our Jones improvements, I don't have it in front of me, but give me. The improvements that we planned at Jones would be the same as what we did during the referendum.
Right.
Capacity wise, we can fit the students at Jones from Lincoln. We just have to make safety and security improvements.
All the other mergers, we don't need additional renovation costs to make those happen.
If I were to amend this to pull something out, what would I need? What does the board think we need to pull out? Are we pulling out the decision of Franklin to Hawthorne or Hawthorne to John Marshall? Is that the part that we're pulling out that's, that isn't being decided tonight? And I say tonight, I know that we don't take final action until the next meeting, but.
That was my assumption.
So that's the part that would be, is there anything else that would need to be pulled out of the, the slides that lead up to this?
I just think.
Action item?
Not in my opinion.
The only thing that you have enough detail on is that you now have the numbers in detail to say that it is acceptable as a budgetary thing to move Montessori from Mann into Lincoln. I mean, that's, from my perspective, that's the only thing we have all the information on. The rest, we haven't had a discussion about.
Well, what?
Enough to my.
I think that's true.
What other information would you need to decide whether or not Grant would move to Thomas Jefferson? I mean, what other school could it possibly move to? Or Lincoln to Jones? What other school could it possibly move to? Like what, what more information would you need?
More about, it, it isn't that I necessarily disagree. I think there needs, just needs, we need to stay transparent on what we're doing and have the details that go along with it. And you've, you've become transparent enough, I think, for everybody to understand what would be going on to move Lincoln into J D Jones and bring Montessori over to Lincoln. I, that, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah.
But I would also echo what Lance has to say. I mean, what more information do we need when these are really the only things going forward? You know, with like, like you said, Lincoln to J D Jones and Hewitt, Texas to Riverview. I mean, what, what other data is there? I mean, the big expense thing that I think that we had concerns about was moving, you know, giving, giving Montessori its own separate school and then retaining that school. Because if we weren't going to retain it, then we're going to sell it. And obviously, the fit, the best need for Montessori is by retention. And then we've gone through a whole big list here. Yes, there may be a little extended cost, but I think the benefit, like I agree 100% with Lance, that the benefit of we're going to get more enrollment in Montessori specifically, same thing with the other charter school that they've discussed. So I don't know what other information is needed. My personal opinion is I think that great details here, it's been discussed multiple times. And I would be okay going forward with it as is. Because again, we still have to vote again in two weeks, but at least this gives them direction with Horace Mann to go forward with the designs and get the stuff taken care of instead of costs and us and the taxpayers' money waiting on that.
My concerns are with, not the ones that you mentioned, but with these, these 4K centers and, you know, Hawthorne to Franklin, Franklin to Hawthorne, something to Marshall. To me, those are still all up in the air. The Jefferson, or the Grant to Jefferson, I agree. Lincoln has only been discussed in terms of an alternative for Montessori. So I think we're fine moving forward with that one. It's just those other four or five are where the question marks for me lie because we don't have that, that cost and what that's going to mean for us.
If so, for some reason, you know, the, I think you asked the question, John. If we can't move forward with, you know, a 4K, you know, childcare center because it's too cost prohibitive, we would still be able to then, you know, sell one or two of those buildings and get it off of our, you know, our budgetary expense. I mean, is, would that still be a possibility? And I know you asked that question, what is our backup plans, right? I guess, yeah, I mean, you're right, that is definitely a question that we have. But I don't think it's prohibitive on what we're moving forward with this.
Well, some of it is though, because in order to merge, 4K and fifth grade need to come out. So it is somewhat interdependent, obviously, then. So.
What I'm hearing, am I hearing you correct? You want some more detail on if we, are you concerned about the merger of Hawthorne into Franklin? Or is it really the more of the costs associated with an early learning center?
I think it's, I think the concern is that the slide says Hawthorne Hills becomes an early, early learning center.
Yeah.
Like we haven't.
And Rib Mountain.
But we haven't officially seen the numbers on that yet. So it's not the schools moving that you're saying we need more information on. It's the, what's up for the Hawthorne and Franklin and Marshall one.
Got you.
Well, I agree with you 99% of that because I still think there is a, there's a question for me, for Rib, and some other things that just deal with Rib and South Mountain specifically. And that's why I guess I'm asking to do what makes sense and that we have the details on. But don't close ourselves off to making an easy change. Like, you know, if we approve it today, then we're going to, and we end up killing it later and make the change. I'm just.
Yeah, I guess.
That's why I don't want to prove something ahead of time and then we just change our mind later.
But we already approved the consolidation and we already approved the fifth graders moving out. And so, and part of that was Lincoln into Jones and Grant into Jefferson and Rib into South and Hewitt into Riverview. That, that's already been approved. What we haven't decided on is the Franklin, Hawthorne, Marshall situation. And we haven't decided on the early learning center situation. Are there going to be two or are there going to be one? Is it even feasible? We haven't decided on that.
Right.
And so, so how do we, I don't want to amend it to give the impression that it hasn't been decided that we're moving fifth grader. That was decided in, like, people ask me that sometimes. When are you guys going to vote on this? Oh, we did.
Yeah, and I totally understand the fifth grade thing. And the way it's set up now, you can move fifth graders and do nothing with the elementary schools, right? Because it's been approved.
To move the fifth graders out and not, not consolidate the elementary schools?
Well, I'm just putting it out there. Yes, I'm not saying that that's what would happen.
I wouldn't have voted for that.
But the fifth graders can move right now because you guys approved it.
Right. So how do we, how do we amend this to pull out the issue of Franklin, Hawthorne, Marshall and the issue of early learning centers?
I think you just made the amendment.
Okay, so I move to amend the motion, but to remove from that decision the Franklin, Hawthorne and John Marshall merger and the decision on the early learning centers.
And early.
Franklin, Hawthorne and Marshall.
Karen, do you have that down? We'll wait because you're scribbling fast, so I'm waiting for yours. Because what we will do is we will vote on the amendment first and then we'll go to the motion.
I'll second that amendment.
Okay. Are there any questions about the amendment? That's on, that's on the table right now. If not, all in favor of the amendment to the original motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The amendment motion carries. Now we'll go back to the motion. And the motion is taking a motion to recommend the full board approval of the mergers that we've identified with the amendment. And assignments presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
No, just for my clarification, that motion makes the assumption that we should continue to design Horace Mann without the Montessori addition.
Yes, that is correct.
We will split the Horace Mann budget up into 5.312 million, whatever's left, but not necessarily do anything specifically with that 5.3 million.
Well, I think you're going to be at some point designing Lincoln for us. I don't know where that's going to fall in your schedule.
From 3.6 to 5.3 in there.
Just as you had presented.
Give us the authority to pick how much in between we.
It follows them for the most.
Giving you authority to come back to us.
Exactly. As of now, 3.6 million dollars out of that 5.3, it frees up some money for.
Correct.
Including Lincoln eventually, if you want to. Okay.
What I would ask is that, you know, as you're getting into this, that if there are going to be dollars left over, that, you know, is there a, a list of things that are out there? You know, we've heard about parking in several areas or other needs. You know, what are other high priority things that we can have on a list before us that are kind of in the forefront that we can target, you know, if there are funds?
When does the West design come back to us with some dollars to it?
Weeks, end of June.
So that's a big one, so we'll know, we'll have a lot better understanding of where we sit initially at that point.
Okay.
Dare I say a presumptive congratulations to Montessori. Yep, it's exciting. It's only been 12 years I've been on here, we've been talking about.
It's probably our fault.
It is.
I was just going to say, you were here, you were here. It took the new members to do it.
Responsibility taken, so.
Thank you for this opportunity. It was great to sit next to you, Bob.
Thanks for joining me. I'll stay up here.
All right, we have a few more things to carry on with.
Yeah, there's a couple more slides, want some direction, please? You can advance it, John.
I got it.
Oh, you got it, thank you. All right. So we had talked about staggered implementation earlier. We'd gotten some feedback from staff that the majority were not in favor of that. We, we've, we've continued to explore that, that option. And so this is something we want the board to consider. Would the board be interested in merging Hewitt, Texas into Riverview for the fall of '24? So it would be a year early. It would be, I'll tell you, it would be very tight. Julie sat with the principals and, you know, who could fit where. And, and we can certainly give you a detailed list of where the pain points would be. I'm wondering if you're even interested in the option. If so, we'll bring some more detail. That would also offer then, assuming that the Red Granite Charter could get their federal funding, it would give them a permanent home in the space they want to be. I know there's, there's concerns. The one benefit, I think, to Hewitt, Texas and to Riverview is that, you know, we've got some draft plans for, you know, how we're going to transition students and how we're going to transition families and how we're going to build healthy collaborative teams between merging schools and how we're going to move furniture and equipment and all those. They would get some focused attention on doing that a year early. So there would be some benefit to them where, and of course, we would learn, you know, what goes well and what modifications might we be able to make to some draft plans. So wondering what the board's reaction is to that possibility.
What are you doing with the fifth graders?
They will fit. It's tight, it's very tight.
Everybody will fit there for a year.
For a year. And, and there's an option where we could move 4K into Hawthorne. And as the teacher mentioned earlier, we would have to rearrange Hawthorne a little bit. Or we leave them there and I think we have to give up a bridge room at Riverview for a year. There's, there's some, some structural, it's tight.
I guess it's confusing because I remember the robust discussion about doing a presumed staggered implementation. And there were graphs up here about the staff didn't want it, the administration didn't want it. And now to come back a month later and say, well, here, we're thinking about doing a staggered implementation again and not following. What changed?
We never really.
Red Granite?
Yeah, that's not a reason to upset the apple cart based on all the data that was presented a month ago.
No, I think what we said, we would come back and continue to explore this. Right, so I wanted to bring it back to the board and see, and if you don't want to do it, then we'll proceed in that direction. If there's some interest, then we would.
Can I ask, so this staggered implementation would be specific Hewitt, Texas into Riverview at the start of fall 2024?
Correct.
Which would then free up that space for Red Granite when they want space by fall 2024? Got it.
But a question, just for clarification, as they said before, right? They could still, even if they weren't moved out, they could still, you know, set up huts or whatever. They'd be fine even if they wouldn't move, right?
Yeah, we can create, yeah, yeah.
Whatever the other way of saying it.
Or we have other schools that would have four classrooms available and then they, then they would have to move. So, yeah.
I think the putting Red Granite into a different building that has space would be tricky if it doesn't have the outside space that they need. It sounds like the mobile classrooms at Hewitt would be probably the best option. If, if that's feasible, if mobile classrooms at Hewitt is feasible, that to me would be preferable to disrupting Riverview. I, I understand what you're saying, that you'd be able to, you'd be able to really focus on it. It would also give us some hints on what works and doesn't work at the full one. But I think with it being real tight for a year and just with sort of, you know, how big this change is, I think if we could, if we could do it without it, I think, I think that would be best.
I agree.
Okay.
I tend to agree with that as well.
I would agree with that too. Hearing this concerns of losing a bridge room, which I think is very necessary, especially when you're taking on all sorts of extra students that are jammed in there. And then, you know, the concerns we heard during public comment as well. I would suggest that it would be better for our already existing students to have a more smooth transition, you know, and not have a, you know. If the, it sounded like fundraising could perhaps support mobile classrooms for a year in the location that they desire. It might just be better for.
It would probably improve some of the class size problems at Riverview, which, so that actually probably would be good, but still.
They would go down slightly.
Jennifer has a question. Yeah, I don't know what the enrollment is at Hewitt, Texas, but that fifth grade class having to move from Hewitt, Texas to Riverview and then move again the following year, I think.
Yes, in the second year, both the fourth and fifth then would move to middle school, right?
Yeah.
Good, all right, that's why we asked, appreciate that. And then one last question for you tonight. Have started to have questions about changing school names. And there's some technical aspects to it as, as well, you know, with DPI and whatnot. So we wanted to ask the question, is the board interested in renaming any of the merged schools? And if so, we could draft a process if we had some, some interest.
I would like to hear feedback on what the potential new students and teachers and staff are going to have to say about that because that's really, they're going to be their identity. So, you know, it's more on them. And if that's something they would want to pursue, obviously, I think as a board, we would support that, but.
Is this just for the elementary schools?
It could be any of the schools. You know, we're going to have a, a senior high school, a junior high school. We could ask.
I think we absolutely need to have a process for what to do with the mascot naming issue at the merged, you know, senior high and junior high, for sure. From the elementary schools, I guess I would sort of agree that, you know, if there was a big drive from the teaching staff and students. And, and I don't want to discount the input of the students, but really even more of the, the staff because the students are only going to be there for a few years and we're making it.
Staff community.
We're making, we're making a decision that, you know, lasts for decades. I don't, I don't know that the students are going to have a big opinion on what their mascot is at their elementary school for the next few years.
And that doesn't come without a cost too.
Correct.
I mean, when you rename and you re-mascot and you, I mean, that, that will all, which I think obviously is gonna have to happen at the junior and senior high level automatically, so I don't know. You know, if we wanna open that can of worms for at the elementary level as well.
I think everybody would be familiar with what each elementary school is called and hopefully it'd be acceptable just to leave them what they are. But if there's a big push, then obviously we can review that.
I've heard different views at the, you know, senior high level and actually heard folks talk about leaving East and West the way they are for now, and, you know, maybe at some point in time, post-merger, once we've come together, maybe the students could bring forward, you know, and staff could bring forward some sort of process of identifying maybe a new mascot. Obviously there, like you said, Karen, there is a cost to that, um, but coming together as a community, that could be a part of that process. But I thought that was kinda interesting of, or interesting idea of leaving East and West alone for now because of cost and, and letting that settle. But I could see it both ways, I could see, I could see a new mascot, mascot coming out, you know, to, you know, bring the community together, something to rally behind and be proud of and, you know, so I, I can see it kinda both ways, but probably more discussion and feedback from staff and students.
So let me, let me ask this question, a follow-up. What would you propose for the high school level to start thinking about this? Because already, the coaches are already talking about it.
The coaches are already talking about.
Okay, the equipment that they have to get, the cost of the uniforms that they have to get, the cost that we're gonna be putting into the buildings. Those are all costs that are gonna have to be figured out. And the coaches are very ready to start talking about that, and that only because I had several call me and said, when are we gonna start looking at that? So there is a time, and I knew this was going to be coming, and we all did, it's gonna come to the table. Well, we need to start putting some sort of a timeline to that too, and maybe you need to take a look at the timeline.
Could they, could, could have refined, uh, cost of, you know, putting, you know, through a new, a new mascot be, and logos and signage and all of that kinda be put together. I know Bob, it's probably pretty ballpark, you know, a lot of variables, but, um, I, I if I can throw an idea out there myself, um, you know, we do have some merged teams. Obviously lacrosse is one of them and, and the Wolf Pack, and I've kinda, it's kinda grown on me, um, you know, with a pack of wolves being together, being family. I, I could see kids getting together and screaming out about the pack attack and, um, you know, we could merge school colors with blue and red and maybe add white, uh, some, something to that effect. And, but it just, you know, it seemed, seemed like an interesting mascot that already exists within, you know, you know, some of our merged teams.
And there, the, the most common that I've heard is, um, is that the junior highs should stay the lumberjacks and keep their colors and don't, but then for the senior high, I've, I've heard the two things. I've heard that people say, well, keep it as it is because that's the cheapest, and I've heard people say, come up with something new that brings it together, that, that sort of joins it all together. So I think we need to, you have a plan for a process, I know that's on your timeline. Um, and it's more than just the, just the name and the mascots and the colors too, even as we were at the graduation the other night, um, listening to the, to the school song, I leaned over to Karen and said, this is such a great song, you know, this. That was at East, but it's the Wasa High song, so there's, there's more, there's, there's other things as well that we don't always think of, but, you know, school song is another one.
So it, it's on the plan somewhere in one of these boxes. What are we being asked to discuss then or decide tonight? This is just the very first conversation about what information is the board looking for, is there any interest in renaming? That's really it. I don't wanna go out and ask people what they wanna do before I come and ask you, because it'll set some expectations.
I would say I have interest, I think there is interest.
I, I do at the secondary level, I, I don't frankly at the elementary level, my opinion could be changed, but.
Do you want us to reach out to staff and ask about secondaries, elementaries?
Uh, my, my concern is about doing, I know, I know the coaches wanna know. I mean, I've had discussions a little bit with a couple of the coaches as well, and I've suggested the red, blue with, with white, not really any other names, but, um, I think I wanna echo, well, two things, but I would like to echo what Pat had said a while back. The next two years, they are lumberjacks and they are warriors, and nothing should change it to schools until it's time for stuff to change it to schools. And, and making that part of the comment based upon the West Design meetings, you know, there's gonna be places that Nexus has identified with the team for new branding and things, well, those just need to stay blank until that decision comes down. And, and we'll save that money however you can until it's time to make that change, and then there'll just be a separate project.
Yeah, and that, and that's why, you know, for example, the, I think it was the, um, um, multi-purpose field came to us without the branding on it. That's why Nexus brought it to us that way, for that reason, because we haven't made those decisions yet.
So we could keep this discussion going for a long period of time. I'm gonna suggest that you take one step at a time, and I like what you said, you know, good feelers, good feelers out there, and that, let's move on because of the fact that it's not gonna be decided tonight.
Sure. Thank you.
Put a plan together.
All right, I think that is it, right? There you go, thank you. Two down.
All right. Let's start the next one. As the referendum funded facility improvements continue to develop, construction and budget updates will routinely be presented. Mr. Tess?
Hey, Nick.
Hello.
Nick Anderson from Nexus is here with me, and, uh, he'll have a few slides, and I'll have the familiar budget slide towards the end, so how about if I get you going with? All right. And you're gonna have to advance, John, because my clicker is already, did I do that? Did you do that? Okay, I'll let you keep doing it though.
It's a little bit offset, I don't guess that matters, but, um, providing the, the monthly update, as, as Bob said, thank you for having me here. We'll go through each, uh, I guess there's five projects under construction right now with another one starting here this week. So Stettin Elementary, we're getting to the point where we're starting to move into interior finishes. Um, the building is fully enclosed at this point, um, minus when these pictures were taken. The front vestibule there gets, um, glass block to, to match what was on the existing building, so. Um, that still was being installed. Uh, the HVAC rough-in is roughly ninety percent complete, basically waiting for the unit to, to be set and final connections made there. Um, same with the electrical rough-in. Shortly as we finish up painting, we're gonna start hanging ceilings in there, which then the lights and the electrical trimout will start taking place. Uh, the plumbing rough-in has taken place, um, for the new restrooms and in the classrooms as well. I've mentioned the exterior veneer is ninety-five percent complete, uh, being the glass block, that wa- that was not complete. Uh, the roofing is now a hundred percent complete. I know last time, I think we talked about Stettin, we talked about the roof edge not being able to be a hundred percent complete until the masonry work is done, and that has now been complete, so roofing is all done there. And then, uh, you'll see ninety percent of the windows has been installed. Uh, we leave a couple of windows out for accessibility reasons as we finish up the construction on the inside of the building. Um, and then completing that, we will put the rest of the windows in and the new main entrance as well. The tile work on the inside, uh, on the double bathroom group is ninety-five percent complete, so pretty soon we're gonna start setting toilet fixtures and toilet partitions, grab bars, et cetera, in there. And then, uh, some of the exterior concrete has been poured as well, so it's really taking shape nicely out there. Additional grading and site work, and that's all gonna start taking place here within the next month as well, so. Doing well on schedule on, on Stettin, moving to South Mountain. Um, two additions there, as we talk about, Area B is the smaller addition. Um, Area B, the, the slab on grade has been poured inside the building, which allows for the HVAC and the electrical rough-ins to be completed. Um, masonry for non-load-bearing walls in Area B is complete. Um, the exterior veneer is complete on Area B, so it's, it's in a similar scenario as Stettin as we just walked through. And then Area C, about forty percent of the concrete has been poured on the inside of that building. We have run into some soil conditions that need to be re- ridimated. I'm not saying that right, excuse me.
Remediated.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Tess. So that's actually taking place this week, uh, they got, and this was, you know, once again, estimates made mid-week last week, but I think we're pretty close to sixty percent done with the soil corrections in there. Um, once the soil corrections get completed, we get approval from the Geotech engineer, we'll finish pouring the concrete in there, and then interior finishes will follow as well. Moving on to Riverview Elementary, which, um, is the farthest along of, of all the projects right now. Um, the building is fully enclosed, which we had talked about previously, the ceiling grid is installed, the lights are hung in, I think about seventy percent of the building. Um, the generator rough-in, for the generator, that's gonna be moving from the school forest property to Riverview Elementary. Um, a lot of the, uh, prep work has been completed for that. The building has been painted, as you can see from the photos, in fact, they've got the, uh, whiteboards installed as well. Case work will be coming here shortly. Um, electrical trimout is ninety percent complete, talking about the lights, the switches, the outlets. Um, so those, those rooms are really stake, taking shape right now and, and ready for the final finishes. Um, and same thing where the roof is now fully installed at Riverview as well. And moving on to school forest, thank you. School forest, a lot of things have been happening out there since last time we talked. Um, all the structure is installed, as you can see from the photos, um, everybody sees the, the bright green. Well, that's, uh, an exterior gypsum layer, so there'll be either siding or masonry going over that after it's, after it is insulated, which is a spray foam insulation, similar to the other buildings that we've been looking at. Um, all of the interior concrete slabs have been, been poured. Um, the, all the tongue and groove roof deck has been installed, the insulation, the plywood on the roof has been installed. Uh, the ice and water, so the building is, as far as the roof is concerned, is watertight. Obviously, we have openings for the windows and doors yet. But then the metal roofing, uh, started today actually out there on that project, so I actually started seeing the metal roofing going on in the, uh, next time we share pictures. Ninety percent of the exterior gypsum sheathing, that's the green, bright green that you see in the, in the photos there is done. Um, the exterior insulation, they started on last week, so it's a similar, where they're gonna be spraying the entire building with, with insulation, and then they will be installing the exterior finishes over the insulation. Um, seventy-five percent stu- uh, percent complete on the interior metal studs. You can kinda see that on the, the top right picture there, where the rooms are all starting to take shape. Um, the mezzanine is actually being installed as well, I don't know if I had that listed on there. And then now that the, the slabs have been poured and the metal studs are going up for the walls, the HVAC and electrical rough-in is ongoing, roughly thirty percent complete. And then, uh, we had the excavator out there early last week to shape the site, so it's looks a lot different than it did at, at the groundbreaking right now. If you go up there, you can kinda see what the, the building, the space that it's gonna take up, and the, the landscape around is starting to take shape as well.
Yes, Cory?
Before you continue, has, uh, has our contractor out there improved their, uh, timeliness and scheduling and got, got us back on time?
Yes, yeah, so we're, we're within back, within reason of what the overall construction schedule is right now, so yes.
I know the broken covert hasn't helped in KK probably.
No, that didn't, hasn't helped much, but we've been working around that, so, um, yeah, there was a lot of weekends worked, there were some extra hours worked. And yes, the project is back on the schedule where it needs to be. Um, any other questions? Otherwise, we can talk John Mear. If anybody's driven by there, you can see we started moving some soils last week. Um, the new road has been roughed in, um, we're actually working with the Geotech, we may need to do some additional breaker run underneath where that road is gonna go. So as of this, this morning, we shifted gears and started excavating for the northeast classroom additions. So if you go by there tonight or tomorrow, you'll see that, that, that area is all enclosed and that, uh, the excavation with that addition has begun with, uh, footings following here. Hopefully, yet this week, they'll start forming up for the footings. And then there's been some temporary things like the, uh, we have to close off the entrance that would go into this into this excavation, we obviously don't want students or staff running out into the construction area or falling in, into an excavation. And that's where you have, and then athletic fields, so we actually started today with getting some equipment mobilized in the track. We have to basically build a bridge over the tracks, so we're not disrupting that service as they start removing soils out from the multi-purpose field at the East Campus.
Thank you, Nick, uh, the budget summary is up there now. We did open the bids for Hawthorne Hills Elementary, the building portion, last week, and we received decent bid coverage, I believe we had four general construction bidders.
Correct.
Which was encouraging. We also, uh, reduced our design budget, budget, or came in under by about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So that lower right-hand number in yellow that we always like to really draw our attention to has improved by a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars since you saw this last. Uh, the Horace Mann and Montessori split, I didn't know if we were gonna do that or not, but based on direction from earlier tonight, you're gonna see it split from here on in. And the Horace Mann, non-Montessori budget will develop from gray to green to orange. And the, uh, the gray will probably be reallocated to the Lincoln, uh, location to make the improvements necessary for the Lincoln-Montessori, uh, merger or, or move. So this budget, uh, sheet you'll keep on seeing, and it keeps getting taller. So the font might get a little smaller because we keep splitting things up, and that's gonna continue to happen. So any questions on anything from slide down? That's it, no action necessary, so.
Again, item number seven, board review of principal hiring process.
Jim, I would make a motion that we table this till the next meeting, given the time and some of the detail that you and I spoke about this morning. That's still not available.
We have a problem with tabling this one right now? Actually, let's just postpone it, just postpone it. Take a, uh, motion on postponement of this agenda item, and we will take it up anywhere else in two weeks if we wanted to postpone it, so.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion to postpone this agenda item.
A second there.
All in favor?
I.
Next item, number eight, meal price recommendations. I'm just going to skip over all that I have to read and just pass it over to you.
I'm gonna pass it to you, Karen.
Sounds like a plan.
Could be quick, if you wanted to.
It's gonna be very quick. It's good news. Yes, it is good news. Um, normally we have to work through a paid lunch equity tool, but because we had a positive fund balance because of our hard work and food service, um, the USDA gave us a little reprieve this year, so there will be no increases in any meal prices for the next school year. Yay.
By the way, when I saw that, great, you guys are doing a tremendous job.
Yes, thank you, all right.
They are, and the meal prices is only one example of the great job they do, meal prices are a part of it, but.
Yeah.
Well run, thank you.
Thank you, okay. Any questions?
Any questions from the board? If not, let's move to agenda item number nine. Recognition for preliminary, uh, budget.
Sure, we have, uh, not very exciting budget because it's the same as the projection model. And then our reconciliation plan that was board approved accepted the projection model. So we built a budget that essentially was the same as the projection model from January and the same as the reconciliation, uh, motion that you passed probably a month ago. So looking at the first slide, other than the cover slide of John just, we've got links to the budget calendar, the basis of the initial budget, the budget will continue to change reminder, and then, uh, actually what you will be voting on, the budget by fund. If we go to the next slide, that's the budget calendar, and this one's important for us to have. If we go to the next slide, that's the budget calendar, and this one's important for us to have, especially with transition in my department, because the next person is going to use this as a roadmap and all the different iterations of the budget that you'll be seeing. And if nothing else, it's a nice quick visual to know that this is not the final budget. The final budget will evolve and it'll change between now and October twenty-third. Next slide, please. The basis for the budget, there are a lot of things that you used as assumptions to create the projection model and then end up being the reconciliation plan. I picked out a couple of the big ones. Our budget is heavy with personnel. And the first one suggests an expense is assuming three percent salary and wage increases for everybody. Now that's as of now, knowing almost nothing about the state biennial budget. As the state biennial budget is revealed, usually it's revealed in about the beginning of July, July third, eighth, seventh, right around there, the last few biennium. Right now, the joint finance committee is a little bit late getting to work on it, so it could be a little bit later. But maybe by the end or middle of July, we'll have a final budget. If we look back at the last calendar, that gives us plenty of opportunity to hit a couple of those iterations of the budget, knowing what we know about the state budget to allow more than three percent, if the state budget allows for it. So that three percent is what's in the budget right now, not to be confused with what will be in the budget when it's finalized. Also expenses, one thing we did move ahead with. We have the three different plans, and one of the plans was running a little bit in the red compared to the other two. So it was necessary, after seeing this trend happen for about three years, we increased one of those plans by ten percent. The aggregate was a two percent overall increase to our health fund. That is great news if you consider it with the last twelve years. We've had flat premium increases for ten of the last twelve years. That's pretty impressive. Another expense, the non-personnel expenses, most of them that we really can control are being held flat for twenty-three, twenty-four. There are some of them that are, I think of, uh, transportation is an example. Transportation does go up a little bit. Some of the insurances, not health insurance, goes up a little bit. But the ones that we really have control over are being held flat. Revenue, we're assuming an increase in the revenue limit of two hundred dollars per student, and we're assuming that our spend reimbursement stays at thirty percent. I'm hoping both of those are better. I was in Madison last week talking to all kinds of people, and the conclusion is we're going to get more than we got the last biennium. Well, we got zero the last biennium. So that's pretty comfortable for these lawmakers to say you're going to get more. So nobody's really saying much about really how much more. But there's a lot of speculation coming out of Madison, maybe four hundred or six hundred dollars and maybe up to forty-five percent for spend, but we'll have to cross that bridge when we get to it. Next one, John. The budget will continue to change. This is just a disclaimer almost. Annual pupil counts don't happen until September. And sometime declining pupil counts give us protection in the revenue formula, but increasing pupil counts oftentimes gives us more revenue. We'll have to see what that, what happens with our, our September pupil count. The parental choice program has been increasing for about four or five years. If it increases again, we'll have to levy for that, but it doesn't put additional pressure on our general fund. Does put pressure on our mill rate and our, and our levy. We don't know about that until the middle of October. Also, the tax levy and mill rate are not projected in this version because there are just too many things that are unknown right now. Property value, unknown. Pupil count, unknown. Actual, our debt levy isn't stabilized yet because we've got twenty million dollars of debt that we'll be issuing over the next couple of months. Okay, and that's totally strategic. We'll talk about that strategy at the end of June. That'll be one of my last board meetings that I'll participate in. We're, we're planning to borrow the last of the twenty million dollars and invest that money and generate some interest. And we've got a strategy that we're going to reveal in the end of June. So that's going to be built into the budget when you see the next version. So with all of that, this is the actual budget. If you look back the last year's budget slide that looks like this, you'll see it's not much different. As a matter of fact, our general fund amount, that one I thought was noteworthy to point out, it went up point two one percent. So it's going up barely at all. And then the other ones change a little bit, but Fund Thirty-nine example has to do with how much debt we're carrying and how much we're paying off. And, and that one, you can't really compare year over year. But the general fund is a good one to look year over year. It pretty much stayed the same. And then that is what you would be approving as a motion to set that budget in motion for, uh, May, final approval in June, so we can start our fiscal year with a budget. So with that, any questions? Or else if we flip back to maybe the second slide, I think there's a motion on there, John. That one right there, the bold.
So I'm seeking a motion to recommend to the full board the approval of the preliminary budget as presented in order to proceed with twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four spending tiers committed to before final budgets are approved.
So moved.
Any follow-up questions? Not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Mr. Tess. Great, we appreciate that. Moving on to EL instructional teacher. We'll take that one first, and since I have a small novella here, I'm going to just simply pass it on to you, Mr. Andrew. You may take it from there, talking about the programming implementation.
Yes, so you have a board, um, a board policy that requires that all administrative job descriptions are approved by the board whenever there are changes or adjustments to them. And so, um, what I have before you are two job descriptions. One is an updated job description for the EL coordinator position. And the other one is a new job description for instructional teacher program implementation and instructional coach. The only reason why that title has a twenty-twenty-three was so I could differentiate it from another job in the file structure that we have. So, um, essentially what we're asking for is just these two job description approvals. Many of our job descriptions, we're finding, um, we're updating them as we have openings that come up or as we do any type of a restructure. Because I'm finding that some of them are as many as ten to, up to twenty years old, and we want to make sure that we get those reflecting what we currently have. So the EL job description that you see in front of you specifically has the administrative type roles that this, um, position has held. It includes things like staffing, professional development, um, oversight of reporting for the state and for the federal government as necessary, um, oversight of our access testing platform. That's a required part for us to assess the English language, um, level or assessment, um, level for students. And that determines the kind of staffing that we need. So everything's kind of interconnected. The key difference between that position and the instructional teacher program implementation and instructional coach, and by the way, that title was given to us by the Department of Public Instruction so that, um, they would specify that that is the title we have to have on that job description. This position will primarily have two, two main functions. The first function is the creation of a newcomer center. So some of you who've been on the board for a long time may remember that there was a newcomer center here at Wausau School District many, many years ago. At some point, when our newcomer numbers started to fall away, it was determined at, on, for some reason, that that, that newcomer center was no longer necessary to operate. And so the newcomer center was disbanded. With the number of newcomers that have come, um, in our student body and the significant increase of newcomers that we were told to expect over the course of this next school year, we believe that it is essential that we bring that newcomer center back. It's been something we've been talking about for a couple of years. And in order to do that, we need somebody really dedicated, um, with a significant amount of resources to that support. Hand in hand with that, we are hearing lots of feedback from staff that with the increased newcomer numbers that are in their, um, regular ed classrooms, they're struggling to be sure that they're meeting all of the needs of the newcomers, um, that are in their classrooms. And they're looking for resources, support, help, guidance as to what other things they can do and try in order to meet all of those student needs. So hand in hand with the implementation of the newcomer center, this position will do, um, the instructional coaching components of being able to give time and resources to be in the classrooms, both regular ed as well as our EL staff. From an understanding standpoint, Shannon Charbonneau has been talking with us for a long time about, by a long time, all the time that I've been here, I've heard about the request to start another newcomer center and get that going, and also the request to be able to have more time, um, not doing as much of the administrative work, but really focusing intentionally on our coaching of our teachers, um, to meet the student needs. And so as a result of that, um, that job description of instructional teacher program implementation and instructional coach, um, came to be. We worked with DPI, I mentioned that, um, previously, because I also know there were a couple of questions about funding and that sort of thing. There is no additional budget impact as a result of, um, these two roles actually being, um, in process in tandem with one another. And the reason for that is because the way that this job description for the instructional teacher program implementation and instructional coach works, we can fund that out of available money that we have in our Title III budget. And so, um, that will be funded from an external source, um, from the district, and our overall expenses do not change. So that's the one question for sure that I know has been asked out there. The second question that I know has been asked is whether or not this does result in an increase in administrative staff. The answer is right now, yes, it does. I believe that's a two-year commitment for doing that. And in the connection there is that during the course of talking about this possibility, Shannon did share with us that it is her intention to retire at the end of two years. And so she really, really looks forward to the ability of getting that newcomer center up and operational so that she can ensure that, like, her legacy would be that, that the students that are coming to us through the newcomer process, um, are able to get the instruction that they need, and she can ensure that all of that instruction is, um, solid throughout our classrooms. So, um, it kind of works really well in that regard. And because of the funding being available through Title III, the budget neutral component of this made this kind of the ideal time to look at this process. So, so I'm just asking for approval of the two job descriptions, um, the way that they are presented here.
Let's put motion and then we have questions. Seeking a motion to move to recommend to the full board the approval of the updated job descriptions for the EL coordinator and the EL instructional teacher program implementation and instructional coach.
So moved.
Second? Questions?
I have a que, I'm so excited to see this happen. I've seen this need firsthand. I don't know that these are necessarily specific to the job descriptions, but I am wondering, is this intended to be filled for fall of twenty-three? And is there a location that's been determined for the newcomers?
So it is intended to, we're not entirely sure if we're going to have it up and operational for the start of the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. At the latest, we want it operational for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. But if there is a way for us to move all the mountains that need to be moved, we will be trying to get it implemented even potentially mid-year because that is when we're expecting another influx. As for, um, the, the positions will be starting right away though, because that planning kind of already started even before we brought forward the job descriptions, so. And in terms of location, um, there are a couple of locations that Shannon has been considering and is still reviewing space and numbers and what that actually will result in. Because once we know that, we also have to work with busing and other things. So there's a lot of, a lot of steps still to be had. But Shannon was really looking forward to, to being able to move forward, so.
Any other questions?
When, when you mentioned the influx, um, that's, that's coming or that's expected, what, what role do we play in deciding what we can and cannot support? You know?
That's a great question. I'm not sure that I know that. I don't know that we have a direct control over that. What we received for communication was a heads up to expect as many as, I believe the number was sixty to eighty additional newcomers that will be arriving sometime between September and March or April of next year. I'm going to turn around and look at my colleague Katie, just to ask if she has anything to, to add to that.
Well, Kayla and I have been working with ECDC, and so they did share with us between now and the startup school, like a hundred and fifty, like they've been granted, like, to receive that many new refugees. So a hundred and fifty, they were given that number. So we will definitely see at least thirty to forty to start the school year.
So, because the, what I, or my understanding, what I have heard is that districts have the ability to say what, what they can and cannot support. And that thus far, we have said we will support anything, anyone. Which is great if we can. It's not so great if we're accepting students into a placement that we don't actually have the proper support for, and there may be better support in a different school. Maybe I'm going too far beyond the job description, but it has to do with the newcomer center. So I don't, maybe we, it's just a, you know, an agenda item for a different meeting. But, um, it's a concern that I have, not with the job description, but with the newcomer center is, you know, because we have to balance of what, what new, what new things we can take on when we have what we already have here that we also have to make sure that we have properly supported.
I, I don't think I'm speaking out of turn when I say that I don't think it's a matter of us not being able to support the newcomers in our current structure because we're doing it now and we have a lot of them. It's more a case of we can support them better by redistributing our resources in such a way that we can provide them with that newcomer center initially, to prepare them and move them out then into their home schools eventually when they have met, um, the, the preparation needs for being able to do that most successfully.
Yeah, and support, I mean, support could be, can mean, so as an example, if a student, um, comes to us and speaks no English at all, and we don't have anyone in our district that speaks the language that the student speaks, sometimes the, the more generous thing is to say no so that the student ends up at a district that actually has someone who can interpret for him or her. That's the kind of thing what I, when I say support is. Because my understanding is the students do not come with sufficient federal funding to provide those types of services if we don't already have them.
I, I don't know enough about the program pieces for that. Every, everything that I've been involved in in terms of conversation is that, um, we have plenty of resources, not necessarily in the right space to be able to support all of the students from a newcomer center standpoint, because when we divide them out into all of our schools, we don't have a concentration enough to provide that more heavy dose of support, so.
So there are some safeguards in place for what you're talking about so that it doesn't become so watered down that we're ineffective with the students that we need to. And speaking of ECDC, Wausau really is their preferred location because of our, our transit systems. And so where Schofield maybe doesn't have quite as, able to, and our field is further away from their central location, Wausau becomes that area. But in talking with some of their program representatives, we've had that discussion about the idea of at some point, there's a saturation where we're ineffective in helping kids. And so the newcomer center really is kind of a nice place for that, to get kids in, to be able to assess where they're at, and then what's the best location for those students to go. But we will work closely with ECDC as we go through. I think the challenge for us becomes the idea of we have families that are coming, and if we say no, then that means those families aren't able to come. And what does that mean for them from a community perspective?
You're just thinking, because in the, in the past, like with, when we talked about the newcomer center from many years ago, we had an influx of many, many students, um, speaking the same language. And so you put resources to that, where you language, and so you put resources to that, or you hire interpreters, and you, you know... That gets tricky if you have an influx of 30 or 40 students and they speak 12 different languages, and we only have interpreters for one of the 12, and I'm just making those numbers up. But if that's happening, I don't know that we can provide the best support for that child. The best support for that child may be in a district that can actually have an interpreter to help, you know? Imagine the challenge of teaching a student to read who doesn't speak any English, and the teacher doesn't speak the language the student speaks.
It sounds like that's gonna have to come as part of this program development, right?
Right. That would happen anyway. We have, I don't remember the number of languages already in our system, and we certainly don't have interpreters for all of those. We actually subscribe to a service that is a language line that has over 200 languages available to it to utilize when we do have to have interpreting in languages that are beyond the scope of what we have available for staff. That's a pretty common process that most districts across the state, at least that I've worked in in the past, have always had. It doesn't help necessarily with the student end of things, but that's why we have the EL specific resource teachers who have the training and the background in terms of how do you support students that don't have that first language or a direct connection with some language skills in English to actually have conversation. So, there's a lot of technology that we utilize and other sorts of things to be able to move that work forward and be able to meet the student needs. That's only a partial answer, I know, but I don't know if that's helpful.
But you're asking us for the job description approvals.
That is correct.
Okay.
Yep.
I think that's an important conversation to have, though, so I appreciate that maybe we should agendize that at some point, because I think this is really important with the existing situation we're in. We need to move this direction. My understanding was, at least last time I learned, we have about 53 newcomers currently, and about half of them, 25-ish, have come through ECDC. The other half have just moved to the area and are... The definition of a newcomer, I learned, was new to the country in... Under two years, having lived in this country. And so, it's not just through ECDC, so I think it's really important in order to support these students first and foremost, but also our classroom teachers and every other student in the classrooms who, you know, have to then kind of adjust because the learning is tricky. So, I think this is the right direction, but I do really agree with you that there is a role that the district does play in approving or saying, hey, we're at a saturated level with that conversation with ECDC that needs to probably be part of another conversation, so.
Yeah, fair enough. So, I agree with you. I think it makes sense we need the newcomer center either way. My ongoing concern would be how we address going forward, what we can and cannot handle.
Fair.
So, I'm seeking a motion to move to recommend to the full board the approval of the updated job descriptions for the EL coordinator and the EL instructional teacher program implementation and instructional coach.
We already did that. Now, we just need a vote.
We did. It was such a long time ago.
Well, you want to do the vote for the motion first, so.
So, let's go with the motion. There goes the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right, let's continue on. The transfer from Fund 10 to Fund 46, District's Long-Term Capital Improvement Trust Fund, Fund 46, may only be funded through transfer of the general fund. Following the establishment of such a trust fund in 2016, transfers may be made from the general fund to the Fund 46. All such transferred funds became available five years from the creation of this fund during 2021, '22, and beyond. Administration recommends an amount of $100,000 to be transferred. This amount will be considered a shared cost for 2022, '23 for purposes of calculating the equalization aid for 2023, '24. This will effectively increase shared costs for 2022, '23 in a year when shared costs are lower because of the increased dependency on SIR funds. Took all those words away from me, so you didn't have to do that. There you go.
Exactly right. That is it, right? It's something we've done a few years, and since we're past the five-year threshold, you can essentially spend these almost immediately, right? You just have to spend it for five-year capital improvements, so it's a way to leverage it.
All right, I'm seeking a motion to recommend to the full board the approval of the transfer of $100,000 from the general fund capital improvement trust fund during the 2022 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. I'm seeking a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. We're gonna roll right into the next meeting. This is a special meeting, I'm calling this to order. Agenda item two, improvement and consent agenda action will be requested. Appointments, additional staff, replacement, staff increase and contract increases, separations, resignations, contract decreases, terminations, leaves of absence, and retirements. I'm seeking a motion to approve the consent agenda. Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Request for a closed session pursuant to state statutes. A, consider adjournments to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statutes 19.851C, F, N, G, to consider employment of the public employee to discuss personal histories of specific individuals where discussion may have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of the individual and confer with legal counsel for the government body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation and discrimination matters in which it is involved or is likely to become involved. Specifically, the board will discuss and consider pending personnel matter and related appeals and independent investigation. The board may take action in closed session as appropriate. I'm seeking a motion to enter closed session, which will need to be roll called.
Make the motion enter closed session.
Second.
Okay. We'll let you roll call it.
All right. John Creacher?
Yes.
Pat McKee?
Yes.
Cody Nicolai?
Yes.
Jennifer Paoli? Joanna Reyes?
Yes.
Corey Sellers?
Yes.
Lance Trout?
Yes.
Karen Vanenberg? Yes. Jim Boucher?
Yes.
Motion carries.